And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the South Haven City Planning Commission meeting for November 6th of 2025. I'll call this meeting to order and ask Samantha for a roll call, please.
Michael Campbell.
Here.
Paul Fenton.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Larry Heineck.
Here.
Mary Hasley.
Here.
Eddie Polk.
Here.
Tim Stegman.
Here.
Janice Varney.
Here.
Bob Sherman.
Here.
And we have an agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding the agenda? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. Thank you. We have meeting minutes from the October 2nd regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Again, any motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Moved and second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. Public comment at this point. Citizens in the audience may address the Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda for which there is no public hearing. And I'll point out that every agenda item except item 11, I believe, every other item has a public hearing associated. So if you have comments about the master plan, the city council statement objections, you're welcome to make any comments. Otherwise, we'll move forward with our agenda.
Jim Sankowski, 89 North Shore Drive. I object to the objection that the city council made, especially to 89 North Shore Drive Bundy's Bakery. I think there's plenty of room in this town which lost all its neighborhood businesses over the years to still have a little area dedicated to neighborhood businesses. Thank you.
I'm John Bossermo. I live at 3 Willow Court with my wife, here to speak on the master plan, particularly regarding 89 North Shore Bundy's Bakery. As Jim just stated, he thinks they ought to remain a bakery. Good idea. I think you should pass the master plan the way it is presented to you with the language that the city council presented to you. That allows the bakery to remain a bakery today, forever, even through sales. It can remain a bakery. It does not open it up to commercial development, and that is our major objection. Bundy's is a great neighbor. It's a great bakery. It fits the neighborhood. So I would ask the city council or the Planning Commission to approve the master plan with the language from the city council, and that language was approved unanimously by the city council. There were no no votes. So please approve the plan. Move it on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Philip Rome. I live at 95 Willow Court, just south of Bundy's Bakery. I want to thank Jim for leading us off with a good comment. We are in favor of the bakery, and we're not in favor of commercializing that property. At the October 20th city council meeting, both Jim and Rachel stood and spoke about the bakery. They both stated that their main concern was that they wanted to keep the bakery opening, open, and functioning. That's exactly what we want. They both stated flat out that they did not care if the property was designated commercial or not. They stated that. They just wanted to keep things operational as is without worrying that they were being shut down. Nobody, nobody has ever said anything about shutting Bundy's down. That, I don't even know where that came from, but that is far from true. A week prior to that meeting, Jim was quoted in The Beacon on October 16th in an article that was written by James Wendell. Sankowski says very directly that he and his wife are going to stay at 89 North Shore Drive as long as we can. I don't care if we're commercial or not. What I care about is keeping the business running. That's what Jim and Rachel want. That's what the 20 of our surrounding neighbors want, and that's what we've been focused on. That's what the city council wants. We all want the same thing. I don't know what the question about is. Well, I do know what it's about. It's about making that property commercial. It does not have to be commercial for Bundy's to stay in operation, and that's what they want to do. They want to continue. We all want the same thing. Vote tonight to approve the master plan resolution as unanimously unanimously voted upon by the city council on November 3rd. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your thoughts, and I'll appreciate the outcome. Thank you.
Kim Rome, 95 Willow Court.
Excuse me, would you pull the microphone down so your voice will be recorded better? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak once again. Our concerns have been 89 North Shore Drive. There have been so many misunderstandings about that property. To reemphasize, it can continue to be a legally nonconforming business within a residential neighborhood as defined by our attorney, Matt Van Dyke. He says, "Once a nonconforming use is established, a subsequently enacted zoning restriction will not divest the property owner of the vested right. Thus, a prior nonconforming use is an exception to zoning's general principle that certain uses should be confined to certain localities. When that use ceases, planning goals of the community reflected in the master plan and zoning ordinance step in and take effect. That is a delicate and elegant balance of those competing interests and is a perfect fit to accommodate the Bundy's Bakery use at 89 North Shore. Therefore, nonconforming uses do not need to be and should not be addressed by updates to the master plan. To do so is contrary to the purpose of a master plan, which is to be a general guide for future development." Thank you.
Thanks very much for your comments. Seeing no other speakers from the public at this point is where we typically... Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Excuse me.
We should probably start serving coffee, I think.
Thank you. My name's Jim Wattlaw for 301 Court. Was at the last city council meeting, and they, they sent you guys a resolution number 2025-35 for you guys to adopt this evening. So I, hopefully, you've all have read that resolution, and it can move forward tonight by approval for you. It's in regards, my specific point is regards to 89 North Shore Drive. There's no reason for the commercial designation of this property. We've been discussed at many meetings over this, and finally, city council has found a pathway to make this happen, and I hope that happens tonight by you guys approving the resolution 2025-35. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Colleen, Colleen Plots, and I live at 800 North Shore Drive, but that's a little misnomer because I actually live directly across the street from 120 Baseline. Now, that was an association thing way back that we got the same address, the house on the corner and mine. But when I go out my door, that's what I see, is 120 Baseline. It used to be a very beautiful and natural area, beautiful trees, probably to the 100-year-old mark.
Excuse me a second. You're speaking about the issue with 120 Baseline, which is...
Am I at the wrong time?
Yes.
Sorry.
Please, when we get to that topic, we'll open a public hearing and you make your comments then.
Can you tell me about when that is?
It's item number, well, it's the very next item, actually.
Okay.
The very next item. So, yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Seraph at 201 Court, and as some of my neighbors have already spoken, I won't take a lot of your time. I am a big fan of Gerald Ford's, and I've been up to his museum a lot, and one of the guys that started out with him when he was a young guy was Vice President Cheney, who just passed away this week. He was really a local guy. He became the president, but he was really about a local government. And one of the quotes that one of my professors gave me a long time ago, which still sticks with me, where he said, "A majority must take into account the proper interest of a minority if the decisions of the majority are to be accepted." And I think that's something that always made sense to me in my work and what I do for a living, and I'm sure a lot of you feel the same way. I just wanted to thank the chairman, who showed up at the city council a couple weeks ago, and he said he had heard loud and clear from the folks in Old Court, and he understood our objections and accepted the objections. However, he did say that he didn't agree necessarily that what the outcomes that we all fear would eventually show up. So I appreciate that, Seraph, for you coming forward and saying that. You know, I'm glad that Jim said what he did because, you know, I live next door to him, and we're fine with the bakery. It's, you know, it's never been a problem. We just always want it to be a bakery. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your diligence and your attention to this fact.
Thank you, and I'd hate to think I couldn't go to Bundy's and get a coffee and a cinnamon bun in the future, so.
However, I would suggest the pecan coffee cake is thick and juicy. It's really good.
Thank you very much.
Mike Klein, 777 North Shore. While the city council approved the resolution to you on the master plan unanimously, I just want to also highlight the community support that went into the city council making that resolution. There was tremendous number of citizens that showed up to provide input into the master plan to the city council, and I'd like you to take that into consideration as you're discussing the changes that the city council asked to the master plan.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Sorry.
That's right. Just take a message if that's for me. Just kidding. At this point, we typically read a log of communications we've received. Kelly is very, very fastidious in forwarding those to all the members of the Planning Commission, and Samantha is very diligent in creating a log, and I have that log here, and it's four full pages, basically single spaced, so it's roughly 100 comments received. I'm going to try to summarize those without disparaging any of them, so let's see if I can do that. So Jim Sankowski made two communications, one in favor of Bundy's Bakery being rezoned commercial, and a second communication regarding comments in the South Haven Beacon. There were many comments submitted about, in opposition to changes at 120 Baseline. So with that topic, I'm going to reference Suzanne Schloss, Gerard and Jennifer Durkey, Margaret Bath, Harry Hendricks, Linda Albury, Robert Feeney, Susan Shields, John Albury. All of those folks were opposed to changes at 120 Baseline. There was a communication from Joe and Gloria Spurrel in regard to the proposed special land use for 220 Park Avenue to enable a short-term rental there, opposed to that. And there were multiple comments in regard to taxes associated with 120 Baseline, concerns with taxes at 120 Baseline. That would include Ann Pantalone, Margaret Bath, Gay Meinecke, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Jane and Paul Diedrichs, Paul and Pat Stevenson, George and Beverly Ebersole, Susan Shields, Mark and Jean Shupan, Dan O'Donnell, Jim and Jenny Nicholson, Terry and Gail Nelson, as well, others regarding the taxes issues associated with 120 Baseline, Mary Ellen Keith, Michael and Patricia McInnis, Richard and Diana Fleming, Bob and Peggy Martin, Gwen and Mike Klein, Roger Rathburn, Linda and John Albury, Richard Fleming. I'm sorry, yes, Linda and John Albury, all those were concerned with the taxes associated with the 120 Baseline property. Generally just opposed to changes at 120 Baseline, Richard Fleming, Ronald Weiser, Keith Kalinowski, Kathy and John Duda, Anne Marie Heidbukel, Margaret Bath, Ann Pantalone, Catherine Watts, Richard Watts, Bernadine Reardon, Mike Klein, Mary Sashiggi, Richard Arlington, Jenny LaRue, Mary Mayorano, Colleen and Barry Angler, all opposed to changes at 120 Park. In addition, same topic, opposed to changes at 120 Baseline Road, Carol Graham, Jerome LaRue, Phil Hoag and Peggy Myrnahan, Mary Ellen Keith, Jay Campbell, Ann Pantalone, Patricia Yelmene, Patricia and Paul Stevenson, Raymond Reardon, George and Beverly Ebersole, Carlos Stivers, Maureen Stephan, Robert Stephan, Margaret Robert and Martha Latch, Brad and Margot Shaw, Sharon Craig. Again, these are still opposition to changes at 120 Baseline, Michael and Charlene Matheny, Marge Lampy, Terry Harsh, Carla Husner, Edna Kent, Mike and Tracy Griffin, Paul Wabi, Mike and Gina Tuttle, Jordan Florian, an attorney for Butzel, representing the Windsurfer Condominium Association, Vincent Yelmene, Craig and Penny Massey, Patricia and Michael McInnis, Rook Livford and Ann Rickert. Again, these are all still opposition to changes at 120 Baseline, Gwen Klein, Sean and Sam Field, Liz Smith, Curtis Willie, and Lynn and Dean Fedewa. There was another communication from Kimberly Conkel, opposition to the STR application at 220 Park, and Jessica Peckney as well, opposed to the STR at 220 Park, as was Dave and Nancy Valentine, Diana Wechter and Rob Schuster, this is all opposed to the STR at 220 Park, Nancy Schultz Deveraux, Bernard and Barbara Mathis, Lawrence and Jean Thomas, Richard and Diane Pierce, John and Mary Hendricks. I think, I think I may have gotten them all. Have I overlooked any communications? Mary, did you notice anything?
My list is in different order, but...
It's a daunting task, and like I said, I really, really appreciate Samantha and Kelly for keeping us informed and summarizing the list. And I've said this before, but I'll say it again. I know I personally, and I believe every member of the Planning Commission reads these carefully, considers them, respects your opinion, and encourage you to continue to voice your concerns and opinions. So please continue to do that.
Bob, did you get Alexandra Kalinowski? I heard Keith.
I know. Well, I believe so. What was, what was that in regard to, Mary?
120 Baseline.
Okay, so there's another one. If I overlooked it, my apologies.
It would help if that list could be shared with everybody at Planning Commission.
I agree, and, and I'm going to guess Samantha would be more than willing to do that, so.
I had suggested that last week.
Okay. Kelly, did you have a comment there?
My comment is simply that they're just not ready in advance. We were getting them ready the day of the meeting, so we don't have them...
Up to an hour or two before the meeting, you, you were sending emails today.
Minutes before the meeting.
Right. So it would be post-meeting, probably before that could be done.
But when it's sent to you, it could be sent to all of us. It's brought to the meeting.
This was hand-delivered at 6:50 or so this evening.
Got it.
Any other comments, Kelly? All right.
Chairman, I do have a potential suggestion, too. It might be another route of going as opposed to reading is, is putting them on the overhead, and then we would actually have a record. People could stop, you know, the YouTube video at some point. We could then see all 100 of them, you know, here in the, in the audience, everyone in the audience could actually see that, and at the same time, people at home could see it, and they, they would have a historical record as well. Just another suggestion. Typically, we don't have a list this long. This would be more of an exception than necessarily the rule.
And I must say, there, there's one in particular that came in that just, in my opinion, requires a response. And the, the author, the sender will, will not be named. It's not, it's not important. But the writer offered four or five, I'm going to say, very fair and reasonable questions in regard to 120 Baseline. Fair questions, and those will all no doubt be topics of conversation as we move forward. But the writer concluded after asking those questions, "My only answer to the above question is, in addition to the current owner of the property, planning to profit from an MHC designation, quote, 'Some members of the City of South Haven Planning Commission may receive rewards for the rezoning of 120 Baseline to MHC.'" And I'm going to respectfully take, I'll say, offense at that, and I can tell you, I can only speak for myself with certainty, but I think I can speak for nearly every member here, and that is, we spend hours and hours, hours and hours, reading, reviewing, and researching the issues that come before us. And I can tell you, there's absolutely no compensation for that. City council members are compensated, not like you'd want to give up your day job, but there's at least a nominal compensation for city council members. There's no compensation for Planning Commission members, nor are there any rewards. I can, I can speak with certainty for myself, and I'm pretty confident I can speak for every other member. There are no rewards, no compensation. So if anyone has evidence to the contrary, then please come forward and share those with us, and, and we can get to the bottom, because that clearly would be a conflict, and, and we would not want to tolerate that. If there is no evidence, then I would suggest baseless and scurrilous accusations like that serve no purpose and are personally offensive. So that's my soapbox for this evening. Moving on, unfinished business actionable, 120 Baseline Road. Kelly, would you like to give us the backstory there?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the request to rezone 120 Baseline is back on our agenda. I hope you all remember, this was previously on the agenda for a map amendment, and the applicant was requested to provide some additional information, a clarification to exactly which properties were being rezoned. There is another parcel, 201 Webster, that is also being requested for rezoning, and there was an error on the application that we requested be corrected. Those items were taken care of and submitted, and, and here we are today. Unfortunately, due to some personal circumstances, the applicants are not able to attend, and they have asked that we postpone any decision on the application until they can be back for a future meeting. That said, we have noticed a public hearing, and we will hold the public hearing and ask that you all have some discussion on, on the project, on the rezoning standards. We can make note of any questions that you may have. Brad's here tonight. Williams &amp; Works has authored the staff report, and Brad can help answer questions, and we can relay any questions that we can't answer to the applicant so that they can be prepared for next time. When this item comes back, it will be an old business agenda item like it is tonight. We can accept public comment again during that time if you so choose, Mr. Chair and Commission, but we would not notice a public hearing in the paper again.
All right. Thanks very much, Kelly. And, and as a prelude to any discussion, so we, we will hold a public hearing as advertised. We will not take any action to approve or deny the, the request, but this needs to be on the record because we actually have two items on tonight's agenda with which there are conflicts. And there's been some discussion of that. On this item in particular, Commission Member Hasley is in conflict because her property is within the notice district of 120 Baseline. So by rule, she will not participate in the discussion, and we won't have a vote tonight on this topic, but when a vote arises, she will not participate in a vote. So that's just on the record, and at that point, I guess we'd consider opening a public hearing.
I move to open a public hearing.
Support.
Moved and supported to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. The public hearing is open. For item number five on the agenda, 120 Baseline Road. So please come forward and state your name and address as usual and offer your comments.
So Mike Klein, 777 North Shore, right across from 120 Baseline. First off, I'm surprised to hear that the developer's going to be able to speak again and have the last word without another public hearing. So I would request the opportunity for another public hearing at the same time that the developer is presenting their case. I want to share my opposition to the rezoning request for this property to become a manufactured housing community. And first off, I want to acknowledge that many of the residents here are frustrated with how this process has unfolded, including the recent bylaw changes that silenced our Ward III representative just before the zoning request was scheduled. Despite that, I would do want to voice my concerns to the planning, to the Planning Commission to be on public record. First off, a mobile, a mobile home park is inconsistent with the city's master plan. The proposed MHC zoning directly conflicts with the 2018 master plan, which is clearly designates the property for residential use consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. It also contradicts the direction the city council gave the Planning Commission in its resolution on the 2025 master plan update. And while the developer claims in their application that mobile homes are detached single-family homes, that is simply not true. If it were true, they wouldn't be having a zoning, a zoning application or rezoning application. Second, the mobile home park is incompatible with the existing... Second, the mobile home park is incompatible with the existing neighborhood. There are no other mobile home parks anywhere nearby. The property is bordered by single-family homes on three sides and apartments on the fourth side. The MHC would dramatically change the scale, the density, and the character of the area, and is inconsistent with the neighborhood. Third, there have been no engineering review on whether the infrastructure can accommodate the rezoning. Twenty-four-five-bedroom units, two pools, and a clubhouse require a lot more infrastructure than the previous building on this property supported. Without an engineering study, you have no idea if the infrastructure can support the rezoning application. Fourth off, there is no statement in the application on the impact to health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. Certainly, housing with 120 bedrooms is going to have an impact on increased traffic, increased safety concerns, and emergency services. This needs to be understood and explained in the rezoning application per the zoning ordinance, and it was not. Should this application be approved, it will certainly be challenged as a spot zoning to accommodate the request of a developer that is inconsistent with the surrounding community in the master plan. So I ask you to listen to the concerns of the residents. You certainly got a lot submitted in writing. The residents of the nearby neighborhood and the neighbors that will be impacted by having a mobile home park in their backyard when you're making your recommendation to the City Council.
Thank you very much.
My name is Gwen Klein, and I live at 777 North Shore Drive in Ward Three. The ward that's most directly been impacted by this proposed rezoning. I'd like to also voice my concern that at the first hearing on this rezoning application, the developer also didn't present. So we all presented, and at the end, it was said that this would be postponed. Now it's being postponed again. That puts us at a disadvantage. So we would request to be able to be heard again after they have developed and stated their concerns and arguments. So I'm going to ask you tonight, as you consider rezoning of 120 Baseline and 201 Webster, I urge you to keep in mind that Ward Three residents, those most affected, have no representation on this night, on this discussion of this plan, by this Planning Commission. This alone raises serious concerns about fairness and accountability. Whose voices are truly being heard? Is it the residents who live here in the third ward or the developer who does not live in this third ward? Equally troubling is the timing of the Commission's bylaw changes, rewritten twice in the past year after nearly a decade of inactivity, with the most recent change just weeks before the rezoning request appeared. This creates a perception of bias at a time when citizens expect transparency and objectivity. Despite these obstacles, residents have remained persistent. We've written numerous letters. You heard all the names that were listed tonight. We attend meetings repeatedly, even though the developer cannot. And we submit petitions, of which City Council, or excuse me, City Management lost that petition, but then they finally found it. We do this because we care deeply about protecting our neighborhoods and ensuring decisions reflect the public interest and not the interest of a developer and his profit motive. As you review this request, please ask whether the applicant has met the criteria required for a zoning amendment. First, is the amendment consistent with the master plan? No, it's not consistent. The 2018 master plan, which is still in effect, designates this land for residential use, consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, not a manufactured housing park. If these units were truly single-family homes, as the applicant argues, rezoning would not even be necessary. Ignoring the master plan undermines the public trust and years of community input. Secondly, is it compatible with the neighborhood? No, there's no mobile parks in this area. The surrounding homes are single-family and small multifamily units. A manufactured housing community would be completely out of character. A jarring, high-density development in a well-established neighborhood. I would contend that if you put that there, it would look like a haphazard design pattern. And I can't imagine a Planning Commission wants to look that way. Third point to consider, and that's really big, is the loss of city oversight. Once a property is zoned in MHC, local control is gone. It's gone permanently. It's never to be recruited. You can never get it back. These parks fall under state jurisdiction and not city authority. That ownership can then be turned around to private equity and be purchased by investors, in which they don't have to adhere to any of your direction or oversight. You have to decide, is that what you want? You lose that oversight, you lose every bit of accountability. You can't enforce anything using your police force. You can't make any changes. It's done.
You have less than one minute.
A fourth point is tax implications. An MHC contributes only a fraction of the tax revenue that residential homes do, about one-tenth as much. That loss directly affects schools and the city's infrastructure and other city services. Finally, in environmental concerns. The site has already seen unpermitted tree removal, and it sits near ravines and tributaries that flow directly into the Black River, which flows directly into Lake Michigan. A dense 24-unit trailer park risks erosion and runoff. These are all issues that I'm sure Eagle and the County Dream Commissioner can review.
Your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Andrew Barnes, the attorney for the Windsurfer condo association. Windsurfer is at 777 North Shore Drive. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I know this is a thankless job, and your time is appreciated. We submitted a letter in opposition, and the chairman referenced that. So I'm glad you all have that. Hope you'll take a look at that. That letter went through all the factors that you already are aware of, but that you have to review as part of this rezone application. I'll just point out a few things for saving some time tonight, but I won't restate the entire letter, obviously. But I would point out to this Commission that there is no evidence of any change in the surrounding area or in development trends in the area that would warrant a rezone to this manufactured housing community. It just doesn't exist, and the developer's application doesn't really specify what that change has been. The developer, obviously, as the property is zoned right now, RM1, which is the main piece, could still be developed by the developer. It's residential, right? You can still do what, you know, develop it as needed for residential use. It's not as if this is owned industrial, and that's not an ideal use for that area. That's not the case. Also, I'd point out to this Commission, don't get caught up in the developer's argument that the lack of an MHC district in your ordinance is somehow a defect. I don't believe that's the case. I don't think the law stands for that either. It is possible that there is appropriate part of the city that could be rezoned for MHC, that'd be more appropriate for the area. And also, if there is a designated public need for MHC, that could be also met by surrounding communities, right? The township as well. And I would point out, I know I heard tonight for the first time that this developer is asking for this to be adjourned. I did look at your ordinance. It does look like it says that you're supposed to make a decision after the public hearing. So if you're not making that decision tonight, I would just ask for some update on when you would plan to make that decision. So with that, thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy.
Good evening. My name is Mark Chupin. Kalamazoo is my main residence. I've only been coming to South Haven for 71 years. When I was six years old, we started coming here renting fishing poles where the pier is, and my grandparents and myself. We unfortunately, we weren't wealthy, so we never were able to rent any place or whatever at that time. We're now, we've been at Windsurfer for 21 years. Now, a lot of times, I have a company in Kalamazoo. I've been CEO for 51 years, a pretty good-sized company, does business nationally and worldwide. So I have a little business background, and I've looked at all these things. One of my favorite sayings was, "Mother Teresa," which you guys probably can agree with. "I know God will only give me what I can handle, but I wish he didn't trust me so much." Well, I'm sure that with all the pay you get, you must be thinking about that sometimes. Now, I do know of a worse job than yours. One time, in Kalamazoo, somehow I was on a commission for siting landfills. If you want to meet some people, be on that commission. So you should feel comfortable. And what I want to do is really just appeal to you. Mark Twain once said, "You never go wrong doing the right thing." Now, what is the right thing? Is the right thing representing the citizens of South Haven and their interests and people like myself who pay taxes? My guess is, if this thing goes in, there's a whole area there where people ought to be appealing their taxes, because the values of their properties are going to go down 10% to 20%, I would guess. Now, I'm not a realtor. So I guess what I'm saying is, I would just hope, as you weigh these things, just do the right things. You have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of South Haven, not to some developer. Now, if they want to put some nice houses on there and get some good tax things for us, then I'm all for it. But anyway, thank you for your time. I really appreciate this, and thanks for doing a job that unfortunately does not pay anything. But I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
My name is Jay Campbell. I'm a full-time resident and non-complaining taxpayer at 726 North Shore Drive. I share a property line with the property in question at 120 Baseline. I am disappointed, too, that the developer is not here tonight after, I think he's had plenty of warning to be here, but I think it's really not out of character, I hate to say. But so, as another speaker said, I hope that the developer does not have the last word and that other people are given a chance to speak before the vote is taken. I also appreciate what the Planning Commission does. Your job is a thankless one, and even more so now that you have to become familiar with the Mobile Home Commission, also known as Act 96 of year 1987. I'm sure you're all familiar with that act, right? Know everything about it. Because you're making this decision that essentially would turn this property over to governance of that Mobile Home Commission. If I've read it correctly, the site plan will not be given to you if it is zoned as manufactured housing community. The site plan would go to this Mobile Home Commission for approval, and all further site plans, any changes, would go to them. So you really do lose control. So I would use that as consideration when you think about this. People have talked about how mobile home communities are taxed. We're not unfamiliar with mobile home communities, although they're not called that in South Haven. We have the Depot Mobile Home Park, which has 100 units. Last year, that entire parcel of 100 units was taxed $26,000 for the year. Now, if my math is okay, and I did win the Michigan Mathematics Prize competition when I was in high school, so, but I may be slipping, that comes out to $260 per unit. 260, I gotta try, $260 per unit is what they pay in the Depot Mobile Home Park. Well, it's actually, the person that owns the land collects it as part of the lease. The way most of these places work, and as a manufacturing home park, you would have to work this way. The land is owned by a single person, and the people on the land pay the lease. So I think we would lose a lot of tax revenue if it was zoned in this manner. So anyway, sadly, you do not have a decision to make tonight, but I think it would be a relatively easy one if you considered the master plan, the guidance of neighbors, and also the guidance of the entire community, I think, when they would think that maybe the unequal tax burden placed on other people in the city to pay for people in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jay.
I'd like to point out, with the math win, that would make Jay Campbell a student athlete.
Or would it make him a mathlete?
He's amazing.
Please go ahead with your comments.
Sure. My name is Colleen Clotsch, still, half an hour later. Okay, I'll sit. Okay. I live directly across the street from 120 Baseline. When I look out my door and turn to the right, that's what I see. It's just outside of my driveway. And I used to enjoy the natural elements on this parcel of land, including being affluent with beautifulness of nature, deer, collecting of eight or seven in a group in the morning and also in the evening. Also, the squirrels, but they're not quite as important. But also, the naturalness of it. I'm not sure if it's called a stream or what, but it's the part of the water that flows into the Black River that was mentioned already. So those things have been pretty much abolished. When the trees were being cut down, the deer disappeared. I mean, they were not anywhere near this land with all the noise. And that lasted for quite a while. And then to find out that this gentleman did not follow the rules of the city as far as cutting down all those trees. He also had several stop-of-work issues, which, again, kind of goes along with what was stated, I think it was by Mr. Campbell, about the actions of this new owner. I did a little research on taxes, too, and I don't want to necessarily stress the amount I'm going to say, but I want you to see the difference between a resident in South Haven and a resident of a mobile home park. So I researched on the Internet, so I don't have a date. So again, these numbers might not be exact. Okay. Taxes for a mobile home-owned residence, if we can fit residents, I guess, was told to be $3 a year. Even 200 sounds a little bit small compared to what I pay for taxes right across the street from 120. And I definitely will be fighting for my taxes if this mobile home park goes in across the street from mine. I had to fight once already because the person that makes up the amount of what your house is worth gave me a value that was ridiculously low. Excuse me, ridiculously high, I guess that would be. But anyways, I went around the neighborhood then and saying why I didn't think my taxes should be that high. Well. Just a minute. Then to find out, the assessor had not been to my home in 10 years. He was making this amount of taxes. I just had to bring that up because of the difference. This article on the Internet said, "A person in South Haven who doesn't live in a mobile home park was paying about $3,000 and some dollars." I don't see the exact number written down here anymore. But just a difference, $3, $3,900 and something. I think that's atrocious, and I think they're going to be using the city and misusing the city. That's the way it started out anyways. Now, instead of seeing that beauty across the street, I see a zipped-of-trees area. And I wonder, I won't ask individually, but Planning Commission, have you been by to see this area? I hope so. It's atrocious. The deer no longer come. If there are, there's like a lonely little deer out back as compared to a group of eight or nine coming morning and evening.
You have one minute left.
Thank you. Thank you. And, um, I think that may be my last point. Let me check here. I think that's it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks for your comments.
You bet.
Other comments regarding the 120 Baseline Road issue?
Good evening. My name is Jerry Durkey. I live on Webster Avenue. My wife and I own five properties on Webster Avenue, three of them are but 120 Baseline. In my mind, it is backwards thinking to have a zoning change to accommodate a developer's plan. I think it should be the other way around. The developer's plan should abide by the zoning. I'm also concerned that 201 Webster's was currently the employee entrance to the nursing home. That will become a street, a private street, I assume, which will dump onto Webster Avenue. I'm also concerned of the, that the infrastructure cannot handle all the sewage that will be running down Webster Avenue, which I live at the end of. So I'm going to make sure I have a valve to keep any backup that may come into my home. So those are my three biggest concerns, my properties, the value of them, the zoning change to accommodate a developer rather than the developer submitting a plan that accommodates the current zoning and the infrastructure. So, thank you.
Jim Whitlaw for 304 South Haven, Michigan. After sitting at a lot of these meetings the past four and a half years, I've come to realize tonight, it all results back to a zoning map. The people here this evening, we all have something in common. We are all concerned about the future zoning map that is before you and this committee. If you go back to 2011 and the 2018 zoning maps, both items that we spoke about this evening, these areas are residential, RM1, and they should remain RM1 without any changes to both concerns of both groups this evening. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Chupan. I, we have a condo at 777 and Baseline Road, Aaron Nurse Shore Drive, and I'm just here to strongly support all the comments to not change the zoning to manufactured home community. It's not, just do the right, right thing for South Haven and all its citizens. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Feeny and I live at 800 North Shore. It's, I've been here, oh, about 25 years with my family. 800 North Shore is a four-unit condominium complex. It was originally the Virginia Beach Hotel, for those of you who may remember, 1899. And our, it was a small community and the area that we live in, in South Haven, creates a certain environment that attracts people to, to want a vacation and relax. And you can read about South Haven in the magazines and newspapers and it always speaks to the environment and the climate which the, the city operates in, in a very positive manner. I and my neighbors oppose the 120 Baseline project. After trying to find out what a manufactured home was, most people have avoided wanting to say a trailer park, but that's in the end what is being said. And I also, so we object to that and we object to the, to the use of that land for that purpose. More importantly than I learned tonight is that the developer, once again, is not here. That's not acceptable. The public, you all, have committed time and effort to respond to this situation. The developer either must think he's got it locked up or he has no real interest in developing the property here. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Paul Wabi. My wife Kathy and I live at 731 North Shore. And part of my reason to come tonight is just wanted to hear the discussion and hear what was all being said and where we are today. Certainly all the compelling arguments about the tax base and, and the rezoning issues in general and what precedents that may lead up the road. I just wanted to just remind everyone of just the density change that has happened in that whole end of North Shore Drive. I've lived there for 39 years at my address with my wife and it went from a sleepy, kind of very quiet residential neighborhood with some summer home people showing back up every summer and we would say hi and everyone would enjoy their, their place. What's gradually happened is the density has increased greatly and specifically, and no one's mentioned this yet, but the beach at, at Newcombe Street is a big draw for, I'm sure, a lot of people and there's probably a lot of landlords and people that want to have, provide, you know, access to beach for their renters and, and, and short-term people that, that come here in the summer. So the end result, especially given what's up the road on Baseline Road, a, a, quite a big development at Harborview, there are just crushes of people that show up in the summer here and it's really pulling out of your driveway as a challenge. And the beach is, is really very overcrowded and, and as I see us going forward here, that's only going to get worse. So anything in my mind that, that would change the density even more, I think is a bad thing for the neighborhood. It's, it's killing what's left of our sort of neighborhood. So that's, that's, I just wanted to point that piece out. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Paul. Seeing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I move to close the public hearing.
Point of order. We do want to take public comments next month. Should we be closing the public hearing or holding it open? I guess I...
Good, good question. I'll defer to our, our ace attorney and our zoning administrator.
Hold it open.
So you have a couple options. You can either hold the public hearing open or you can close the public hearing and allow members of the public to comment on items that are on the agenda but for which there is no public hearing, so.
At a future meeting in that case.
It's at the discretion of the Planning Commission which of those two options you do.
Let me point out that if we took the second one, however, it would be against the interests of the public because they would be speaking before they heard the developer.
Yeah, that's, I mean, these are policy considerations for the Planning Commission. But, but yes, Mr. Campbell is, is correct on that.
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my motion.
All right then. Is there another motion?
I moved...
Perhaps, perhaps we don't need one, we'll just simply leave the public hearing open. That's acceptable, I believe?
Correct.
All right. Thanks very much. Kelly, help me here. So at some future date, perhaps December, this item will appear on an agenda again and we will be able to make a decision. Hopefully, the applicant will be here as well as other interested parties. And at that time, potentially would be a resolution as part of the agenda packet. And that resolution would, at that point, again, help me if I'm going astray, that resolution would include some, I'll say, supporting logic reasoning for a vote to either approve or deny the application. Am I right there?
Well, which way is she going to write it? To approve or to deny?
Well, I, the, the comments and the discussion about the, the factors associated with rezoning are, are up to all of you. So I, I would recommend that Planning Commission have some discussion tonight about the, the rezoning itself and the standards that need to be answered to rezone property. And we've got Brad here. Brad is available for questions. Nathan's available for questions. If you have questions for the applicant, we can put those to the applicant. So I recommend having some discussion tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Mike, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Nathan.
If I could just briefly follow up on, on what Ms. Getman just said, it, it would be helpful for staff in our office to have some guidance from the Planning Commission with respect to the factors. And the factors are in Section 2503, Subsection 3, you have five factors that must be considered. Now, that does not mean that you're making a decision tonight and it doesn't mean that you can't change your mind on how those factors weigh at a future meeting. But if there is no substantive discussion tonight, then our office and staff is in a difficult position to prepare any sort of resolution for you for the next meeting. So to the greatest extent possible, it would be helpful to have some robust discussion on your preliminary thoughts on the factors in Subsection 3.
Understand, I think that's exactly what Kelly is advocating for. So that, that said, yeah, Mike, go ahead.
I, I do wish to bring up our bylaws that we changed in February 4.9 where it says the applicant or the applicant's representative shall be present at the meeting when their application is discussed. Failure of the owner or representative here at that meeting will cause the commission to postpone any action on the request until such time as the applicant or representative is present. So that would suggest something contrary to what the attorney said. I'm just throwing it out there, not saying that I'm in favor of one over the other, but I'm saying it is in our bylaws that we want the representative here when we have the discussion.
But the bylaws say, I believe, postpone a decision, is that correct? Or an action?
Well, it says postpone action, but it also says, first sentence simply says, "The applicant or the applicant's representative shall be present at the meeting when their application is discussed." There is no one here. Okay? Good point.
And also, I don't know how many months, I would want this to go on and on if we have something happen next month, that the applicant isn't here. Certainly, we have had an engaged public involved and all of us have been engaged in that not only have we read this entire application, we've also read all of the, the letters that have been sent to us. You know, I, I'd like to have some kind of discussion tonight to help staff draw something up that would give the applicant the opportunity to see where we're headed and, and I appreciate what we've written to hear discussion, but hopefully they, they'll have that opportunity again next month and that they watch this tape.
So then what does that require? A motion to suspend the bylaws?
Well, we're going to have a discussion next month as well.
Clark, in, in regards to the applicant, if I remember correctly, the first iteration of this was missing a partial number in public notice. So that was the reason for not making a determination. And then, from what I understand, tonight, what happened, if it happened to any of us, none of us would be here tonight either. So I think it's quite a, a valid reason they're not in attendance.
So what's our collective pleasure?
I don't see any reason we can't discuss it. We will make our final discussion before we vote and he will be here at that time or they will be there or their representative will be here at that time. There's not, I don't think there's anything that prohibits our doing any discussion now, particularly for the benefit of staff.
If we have no discussion now, I think Nathan and Kelly are going to say we can't even possibly draw up any kind of a resolution for consideration in December and that will push it to at least January. Is that a fair statement?
Ultimately, ultimately, it's, it's Kelly's decision whether to, to draft the resolution. I would, I would defer to staff on, on that. I'm, I am happy to draw up whatever our office is instructed to draw up. I will say it would be very difficult to draw up a resolution without discussion, but...
I would agree.
And I, I guess, to the extent that there is a question about whether the Planning Commission can have discussion tonight, I, I would interpret your bylaws as allowing that. The word "action" as used in other contexts in the bylaws indicates some sort of decision. For example, you have unfinished business actionable and new business actionable. If the word "action" meant discussion, then, then you would never be able to discuss anything for unactionable items. So I don't interpret the word "any action" to apply to discussion. That being said, it is ultimately the Planning Commission who has the right to postpone or not. So if you believe that the applicant should be here and you don't feel comfortable discussing this item without the applicant here, it is completely, completely within your discretion to postpone. However, I don't interpret your bylaws to preclude you from having discussion.
All right, I'm going to suggest that we should have at least some discussion and I'll ask for your opinions in regard to the elements to be considered in the case of a, an application, A, B, C, D, and E, as outlined in the zoning commission, zoning ordinance, rather.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be helpful if we had some understanding of the Michigan Manufactured Housing Act of 1987, some basic questions that have been brought up in many of the letters that we have received. So if we could ask some questions of our attorney with respect to that act so that we have some base information that is reliable to use in determining what our next questions would be?
Entirely reasonable because there's been lots of statements as to loss of control by the city and all kinds of things that would flow to the Manufactured Housing Commission. Nathan, could you help us in that regard?
I, I guess, are there, what are, I would ask for some specific questions, otherwise, I mean, I could go on for hours about...
Happy to. So let's, let's start. So the Michigan Manufactured Housing Commission Act, that deals with mobile homes only, correct? They're called manufactured homes, but they're also known as mobile homes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Then, in terms of the loss of the oversight, and I'm just using the outline from one of the letters that we received, the, is it true that once we were to rezone, if we were to rezone, the parcel in question, or any parcel, to MHC, does that then turn governance of that parcel over to the state of Michigan, not allowing the city of South Haven to regulate it in any way?
No. The mere rezoning would not turn over any jurisdiction to the Manufactured Housing Commission. It would be when an actual development comes in that the Mobile Home Commission would then take over in some respects. But the mere, I mean, you could, you could rezone something and it could never be developed, it could be developed into something else that's permitted under your zoning ordinance. The mere rezoning would not have any effect.
So then let's go to the actual development occurring. What are those specific things that are turned over to the MHC?
So the, the Mobile Home Commission would typically have review of many construction and site plan aspects. There would still be a site plan that would be submitted to the city. However, the city would not be able to enforce any restrictions that are more restrictive than those developed by the Mobile Home Commission Act. more restrictive than those developed by the Mobile Home Commission Act, unless the city had developed an ordinance that was approved by the Mobile Home Commission.
So, then the taxation of this particular community, you have the land and you have the, the manufactured homes. Is it correct that the manufactured homes pay something like $3 a month for tax per, per unit?
So, I, I'll answer that, but I would caution that the tax implications are not among the factors that are included in Section 2503, Subsection 3. So, I would caution the Planning Commission from considering taxation items when the city council has not included those types of items in what is appropriate to be reviewed for purposes of a rezoning. That being said, yes, the, the mobile homes themselves pay less than you would typically see for a comparable home. One of the other assertions that I've, I've seen in some of the public comments is that the, the land is taxed as undeveloped land. That would not necessarily be true. If there are developments within the manufactured housing community, that would typically be taxed as developed land. You would typically see that as commercial improved, is how other municipalities have taxed that. I'm not sure what position, if any, your city assessor has taken on that. But that was one thing that I saw repeatedly that is not necessarily accurate.
Okay, and thank you. And certainly, the question was asked mostly to inform the public, based on what they've been finding themselves and discussing with us. As far as the, the manufactured home community, are those units then, the mobile, the manufactured homes, is there a limitation on whether they are owned, rented, lived in permanently, lived in on a seasonal basis?
I, I do not know that offhand within the Manufactured Housing Commission Act or the regulations. I'd have to look that up, so I can get back to you on that.
Right, and then...
And the applicant, I believe, had stated that this would be a seasonal mobile home or manufactured housing community. He specifically stated, now, he could perhaps change his mind, but he did state that it would be a seasonal.
Right, and I understand that we don't, you know, they've gone one step further by giving us a site plan when they really didn't have to, I believe, at this point. So, then the other question that I have that was posed by this particular author, the, the property is not sitting in the overlay, correct, Kelly, for STRs?
Correct.
All right. So, if, if it turns out that they could be rental, then could they then be short-term rentals that would not be governed by the city's short-term rental ordinance? It just says hypothetical.
My understanding, and I can give a deeper answer at the next meeting, is that seasonal manufactured homes could potentially fall under what you would typically consider to be a short-term rental, but I can look into that more.
Please. I think those are the questions I have thus far.
May I, may I ask a question?
Please, go ahead.
We have a plan that has 24 units, and has, I think, a swimming pool, tennis courts. It's, it's got a lot of stuff. Now, if in the course of dealing with their MHC oversight, they decide they want 40 units, and they don't wanna put, you know, a pickleball court in, or something that was originally in the plan, is that something they just deal with this MHC Oversight Board to change their plan? Or would the city actually have any jurisdiction to say, "No, no, no, that's not what you told us originally"?
So, the applicant has included a plan, but that plan is not truthfully before you. The only thing that is before you is the rezoning itself. This is not a conditional rezoning.
Okay.
The applicant has provided a plan essentially to, I think, give the Planning Commission an idea of what they would develop.
Kind of intent.
But, I mean, if, if this were to be rezoned, the applicant could develop it with any use that's allowed by right, or a special land use if they received special land use approval from the Planning Commission. So, it's not so much that if they, you know, I can't really answer about if they, if they deviated from the plan, what would happen, so much as they haven't even truthfully submitted a plan at all yet.
I understand what you've said, but okay, so I accept that. We don't really have a formal plan, but at some point, they're going to have one. And so, when that formal plan is developed, and again, let's assume it's got 40 units on it, are they gonna come to this Planning Commission, or are they gonna go to the MHC Oversight Board to get approval for their plan when they really have one?
If, if it is, if they submit a plan for either a manufactured housing community or a seasonal manufactured housing community, it would first go through the site plan approval process under your zoning ordinance, and then would also be repro, be reviewed by the Mobile Home Commission at the state.
So, you're saying we would have the ability at that time, if we so choose, chose, to not approve their plan? Just because they have to bring it to us doesn't mean we can disapprove it, if that makes any sense?
If there is a lawful reason to deny it, and that would be based on the standards, typically the standards that the Mobile Home Commission has created. So, no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't just have to approve any plan that they brought before you, but there would have to be a lawful basis for you to deny the plan.
And the lawful basis is established by the MHC Oversight Board?
Yes, unless the city adopts their own ordinance that is approved by the Mobile Home Commission, which to my knowledge, you have not done.
Which we have not currently done.
Correct.
Okay. So, we really would be, practically speaking, giving up our ability to review their plan. We can review their plan, but to disapprove their plan in practical spaces?
I, I would, I would disagree with that. You, you are, you still have an ability to review it, but you are not the ones who are setting...
The standards.
The standards. Then again, you're not setting the standards for, truthfully, anything under the zoning ordinance. It's the city council that's already set those standards.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying. I accept what you're saying. I think we're in the fine print. I mean, the city council is part of the city government. The MHC Oversight Board is heavily influenced...
Right.
The membership of that board does not have a heavy bent towards citizens of the state.
Right. To the extent that you're asking, you know, could, could the city develop its own standards?
Equal.
No, not, not without, not without approval from the, the Mobile Home Commission.
Okay, thank you.
So, you would be bound by, by state law there, yes.
Thank you.
May I ask another, just a follow-up on Commissioner Fittens? So, if we were to deny the site plan for a lawful reason within our interpretation of what the standards are, is it true, though, that the applicant could take that same plan and go to the MHC to present it there, and then have them lawfully approve it, based on their interpretation of the standards?
I would have to get back to you on specifically what the process is for if it's denied, and then probably would go about reviewing that before the Mobile Home Commission. I, I don't know that offhand.
Okay, thank you.
I think those are all important questions relative to the Manufactured Housing Commission, but there's others that I think we can certainly discuss. The, the five items that the South Haven zoning ordinance says must be considered, some of them certainly are worthy of some discussion. A says if the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the city's adopted master plan.
I...
And, and before you respond to that, Clark, B says if the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with recent development trends in the area, and C, if the proposed zoning amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity of the subject site. There are two others, of course. One has to do with public infrastructure that we might need an engineer to comment on, and, and maybe E is questionable, but at least A, B, and C, I think we can and should have some opinions about and should have some discussion around.
And, and I certainly do. I mean, and I looked at it and, and hoped to at least provide some kind of direction with regards to each of the five. When I reviewed the plan and reviewed what we have in front of us, you know, we have to make a recommendation, either direction to city council, and those recommendations need to be based on these five areas. You know, when I looked at, A, the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the city's adopted master plan, I, I don't feel that it is, and, and would say no to that section.
Can you explain?
If the proposed...
Can you explain?
Yeah, why?
Why you don't feel it does?
Because our, is consistent, our current adopted master plan and future master plan do not look at having the manufactured homes in that area.
Well, what does it look at? It says single-family homes, right?
Single-family homes.
Aren't manufactured homes single?
Uh, this looks like a resort community and not single-family homes. Okay. I mean, I looked at it as long-term, single-family homes or attached homes, and I don't feel like this is the, is, would be consistent with that zoning or to rezon that direction. I mean, I don't see in our master plan that zone that way, nor do I see the future master plan looking to zone it that way. So, I would say no.
Can I, if you look at what we were provided in the package in the Williams &amp; Works section, page 15, the paragraph near the bottom, it says, "The city of South Haven zoning ordinance defines a single-family dwelling as a dwelling designed for occupancy by one family." That's, that's, I don't honestly necessarily agree with exactly what they've said, but that's in what Williams &amp; Works provided us on page 15. So, it, it seems a little bit contrary to that, or I'm just not understanding?
I, I think there's, there's some vagueness here. You, you may have noticed over the last week, two at the most, and I, help me with the street, Kelly. Was it Chambers Street? There was, there were two segments of a manufactured home delivered to that site, lifted into place by a very, very large crane, and is now being finished out as a single-family home. I would say that was a manufactured home that is a single-family home.
Is that manufactured or modular? There's a difference, a big difference between manufactured and modular, and modular does not go into a manufactured housing community.
I think we're in the weeds a little bit, and the ordinance does permit manufactured housing on single-family lots, and in that context, a manufactured home would be a single-family home on a single-family lot. But when we're talking about the context of a manufactured housing park, the density is typically such that we would more typically associate that with multifamily housing.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Clark.
Nope, that's fine. We're having the discussion. I think that's good. I'm gonna have it again. B, is the proposed zoning amendment, is it consistent with recent development trends in that area? When I look at that area, I don't see this type of development anywhere in that section of, of the town. C, is the zoning amendment, is it compatible with the existing land uses in the vicinity of the subject site or throughout the zoning district affected by the proposed amendment? I don't think it is. Look at this. I don't feel like it's compatible with the zoning district, throughout the zoning district, or in the vicinity of this site. Now, when it comes to D, infrastructure, any, you know, safety, I feel like it meets both of those standards. You know, we haven't heard anything about the water main or the sewer main in those areas, unable to handle all of the construction in that area. Now, the individual project, I'm not sure about, and haven't heard from the engineer, but I don't see where that has been an issue anywhere in, in the city.
Utilities are available at the site, and while we don't have a formal review for this packet, engineering would prepare a review for a site plan, but they have not expressed concerns about the utilities that are available at the site or, or the infrastructure.
Thank you. And then, this for the proposed amendment, consistent with the ordinance and whether it would protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city. I, I think it meets that standard as well, but if I look at that, it's missing three of the five, and I certainly, I can't see that going forward. Now, there may be discussion whether it's three, whether it's two.
No.
But that's my, if I wanna have a discussion and get things rolling, that's what I've been mulling over after this review.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I would add to what Commissioner Gruber has said, that in 2503E, there is also a need in, for complete application for the applicant to show changed or changing conditions in the area or in the city that make the proposed amendment reasonably necessary. I've read their application. Their three paragraphs are, in my mind, completely non-responsive to the actual question, so I would say that they have not even met the threshold of showing a changed condition that would merit considering a zoning amendment.
Yeah, if I could just agree with that. I think their submittal, at least that I show on page 20, the bottom two paragraphs are not substantial as far as the material they provide.
Along those lines, one discussion is not brought out by the, by the applicant, but one changed condition that concerns me greatly is the court action that says we must consider modular home, manufactured home, within our ordinance. That's a changed condition in my mind. It wasn't there last time we looked at our ordinance, and that's the reason it's in front of us now, is 'cause we have to consider that. I would feel very uncomfortable if one of the reasons that we are not, that we vote no on this was that we don't like to give up our control to the state. That would be very difficult to, to go in front of a judge and say, "That's one of the reasons we didn't approve it."
Unfortunately, that's not one of the areas we, if we stick with what's in front of us.
Yep, yeah, yeah, but I think it's a consideration we have to make. Not one of the five that were written into our ordinance, but it's a condition.
Mr. Chairman, one, one question for, about that to the attorney. So, does each local government entity have to provide something for MHC, or given the fact that we have a regional sort of community where we have South Haven, we have South Haven Township, and we have Casco Township, we already have a manufactured housing community on the superior side, on the east side of the regional South Haven. Many people probably don't even know it's not South Haven.
Township.
It's the township. Can you not, when you're, when you're not allowed to be exclusionary, which I think is what the statute says, you're not being exclusionary, you know, within, in a walking distance, we could walk to the MHC that serves this town and this township, is it not possible to say that that is not a change because we're providing for MHC, but we just haven't determined where to put it yet, but we have something that is shared with South Haven Township?
So, the exclusionary zoning provision in the Zoning Enabling Act does not look at whether the use is available in a surrounding community. The provision looks at whether the zoning ordinance or a zoning decision has the effect of totally prohibiting the establishment of a land use within the local unit of government, when there's the presence of a demonstrated need for that land use, either within the local unit of government or the surrounding area. So, if the effect of the decision is to totally prohibit manufactured housing communities, and there is a demonstrated need for manufactured housing communities either in South Haven or the greater South Haven area, then that would be contrary to the exclusionary zoning provision of the Zoning Enabling Act.
So, then, just two things on that. One, in response to demonstrated need, I'm not sure filing an application is a demonstrated need. I would think the demonstrated need is coming from the people who want to live there. So, I would not say a developer's application is a need.
I, I would agree that the mere filing of an application is not a demonstrated need. However, the fact that an application was filed could be an indicator that there is a... However, the fact that an application was filed could be an indicator that there is a demonstrated need. But that alone, I mean, if that alone was sufficient, then any, anything could be
Right.
A demonstrated need just through an application. So I, I would agree that the mere filing alone
Is not a demonstrated need.
Is not sufficient, but could be a factor.
So then my second point, in terms of talking about the zoning and so forth, keep in mind, and I'm talking to the planning commissioners about this, you know, we put an MHC narrative into the master plan for twenty-twenty-five. However, we did not identify anything on the map, future land use map, for MHC. We were sort of just letting the MHC that's part of South Haven Township be the MHC. So we have some work that we probably should do. This is actually a subject of a later agenda item. So it could be that we would need to talk about that before we proceed on talking about whether an MHC should be going into this particular plot of land.
I struggle with this because
I do too.
The application is for a seasonal, is for a seasonal facility. You know, and in the application, they use terms like adding a manufactured housing community will expand residential options in the city and offer a unique residential environment for persons who want to live in such community in South Haven. That's in their application. That is not, as I understand it, what they have requested. They also have, this application itself is evidence of demonstrated need for this type of housing and residential setting in South Haven. And again, in this case, I may be completely confused, but my understanding is they're basically adding short-term, I mean, summer residences for, for tourists, which is okay, it's not a crime, but it's not, I, I don't know how you get to a, you know, meeting the criteria that you're talking about meeting for it being exclusionary. They haven't really applied for an MHC. They've applied for a, a summer MHC residences.
I disagree with you, Paul.
Okay.
They have applied for a rezoning for manufactured housing.
Okay, that's
Now, they may use it ultimately
Okay.
For recreational uses, but right now, we're only considering a rezoning.
Okay.
My question is, could manufactured, manufactured homes be individually built on that type of parcel of land without getting into a manufactured home community? Because we do have manufactured homes throughout our community already.
If Ms. Getman Desette can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the RM one would allow that because it would allow uses that would be allowed under R one, and an individual mobile home would be allowed in R one. Am I correct on that?
An individual manufactured home on a, on a lot as a single-family home? Yes, we have, we have a chapter in the general provisions that discusses housing outside of manufactured home parks.
So my point is that we could have, and we're looking for housing that's for workforce housing, attainable housing, housing for the middle-income group. And so if we're looking for that, the manufactured homes might be a solution for some folks and could be individually placed on property like this. So that differs than a manufacturing home community, which allows for all of the, well, could allow for all of the things like clubhouses, pools, playgrounds, laundry facilities, et cetera. So I'm saying, do we need a manufacturing house community here? If that's the goal, is to help folks get into and, and have attainable housing, if we can actually do that by placing manufacturing homes either throughout our community or if the developer chooses on this lot without having all of the other pieces there?
So one-twenty baseline is a single parcel, and then you have the Webster parcel. So you would likely be limited to one manufactured home on the entirety of one-twenty baseline. In order to do what you're talking about, you would have to split the property because you're only allowed one principal use on a lot. So in theory, yes, you could put a manufactured home on one-twenty baseline, but that would be the only principal use that you could put on that lot, would be that single manufactured home.
My concern also was with short-term rentals and if that would be allowed through a manufacturing house community through the commission. And I know you're gonna look that up, but that's a concern of mine as well.
And it, Mr. Chair, if I may, just to follow up on, on something that Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gruber mentioned that I, I think might be helpful for the planning commission to think through. Commissioner Campbell brought up that there is no MHC area noted on the future land use map for either the twenty-eighteen master plan or the current draft master plan. And to some extent, you know, he's, he's correct that that makes it difficult to determine, I think factor A, because you haven't identified anywhere within the city specifically for an MHC district. Anywhere that you have an application before you arguably is going to be somewhat inconsistent with the future land use plan in both the current twenty-eighteen master plan as well as the draft twenty-twenty-five master plan. So that is something to consider when you are weighing the factors is if you don't have anywhere that's been identified for MHC, to what extent is it still weighing heavily that this is not necessarily consistent with the future land use map?
We haven't done that hard work yet, and I think that's something that we have to discuss.
Well, I think we discussed it, and, and we determined that this was the best way to go, to allow it to what the economics of the situation would have, and we would make that determination when it came up. There was no mention at that time of, of South Haven Township covering that portion for us. We have a situation here where the developer, the owner of the property, wants it and no one else does. If we just start putting pins in the map, we have nobody that wants it at that location. I think that's gonna be an impossible situation.
That's right, when we first talked about that, I had asked if we annexed that portion on Superior, if that would, and zoned it, if that would suffice for that category. But now, since we didn't identify an area, somebody's identifying it for us.
Nathan, this point has been raised, if this would be rezoned to MHC, almost totally surrounded by, help me here, Kelly, R one B and maybe R M one parcels, is there, is there any risk of that being considered spot zoning and frowned upon for that reason? Or is that not a concern?
Any, anytime that you have one use that is surrounded by different uses, there is a risk that that would be found to be a spot zone. That being said, just because something is labeled a spot zone does not make it illegal. The next question becomes, is that rezoning reasonable? And whether the rezoning is reasonable is ultimately a question for the planning commission. Some of the things to consider would be, it, it is still some sort of residential abutting another type of residential. Now, is it reasonable to have manufactured housing community surrounded by traditional, single-family homes? That's a question for this body.
I wonder too, if, if the group, Clark specifically mentioned item A, is the proposed zoning amendment consistent with the city's adopted master plan? And we know twenty-eighteen is still adopted plan, and there was a language in there that was very clear, if that parcel on baseline should ever become available, then single-family homes would be the preferred or recommended use of that parcel. Is this potential use as an MHC, is that consistent with that statement in the existed, in the existing master plan?
I guess our decision would be, is that, as, as planning commissioners, and if we look at the city, is that where we think we should put an MHC? Because we do have other property, undeveloped property within this city that might be a better, a better place to put an MHC. And I look at, let's say, Sherman, the Sherman property, that might be more appropriate area to designate as an MHC. And I just put that as an idea. I mean, part of our goal then would be to find an appropriate spot, like where the best place to be in an industrial, you know, land. So when I look at opportunities within the city that might afford themselves to a place to put an MHC, I think that might be a more appropriate use than the land being suggested on baseline. When I look at the land around it and the neighborhood itself.
But that doesn't really answer my question. The, the current master plan specifically speaks to that parcel and what it might best be used for, should it become available. Is this use, an MHC use, is that consistent with the language in the existing master plan? Is that a concern or not?
Well, I would say it is, depending on whether we believe that this is going to be seasonal or permanent housing for families. And it's, and part of it is up to the attorney to come back with answers to the questions that I posed about, do these have to be, you know, permanent resident structures? Or can they be rental? And are they seasonal? I mean, the site plan, which again, is just there now and could be gone tomorrow, suggests that it's more resort-like, which does not necessarily say to me, single-family homes.
If I could also refer to something we refer from Williams and Works. In January of twenty-four, twenty, twenty-twenty-four, one of the items listed with the changes that we made to the future land use chart is we added a new manufactured housing district that is for now unmapped. So that would lead me to think that we had not completed our discussion on where that would be best located or suitable within our city.
Other thoughts? Item C says, is the proposed zoning amendment compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity of the subject site? Would an MHC zoning there be consistent with the surrounding sites?
I believe that I would agree that with Commissioner Gruber, that it is not.
It's residential.
So is that a yes or a no?
I, it means I wouldn't agree with you, your, whatever your definition is. I'd say it's just plain residential housing. Now, we did the discussion on the yurts, and that was different than residential housing. Right? So that was reason for denial, because it wasn't like the neighborhood. But in the most generic form, it's residential.
And I, and I guess perhaps this is for Attorney Incs. Item E says, the proposed amendment is consistent with the intended purpose of this ordinance and whether the proposed amendment would protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city. Is that burden on the applicant to demonstrate that this amendment would protect the health, safety, and welfare of the city? Or is that so nebulous as to be of not much value?
The ultimate burden of showing that a rezoning is appropriate is on the applicant. I wouldn't necessarily say that the burden of establishing any of the specific factors is on the applicant because it's ultimately up to the planning commission to decide what weight to give each of those factors.
Other thoughts, comments?
The housing near the depot was mentioned, I think, a few times. And I think that's a special consideration where that was the old railroad switchyard, a lot of contamination, and it was deemed more appropriate to not disturb the soil and use that type of housing in that location. So special circumstances.
I, I do think that with regard to whether it's appropriate here, we also need to consider that the city needs housing and not temporary housing for recreational purposes. And this is a fairly large parcel which could help to alleviate the housing need for working people. If we don't have any place to house the, the restaurateurs and, and those people, we don't really need people coming in to eat in our restaurants. So I, I'm not sure which one of these A, B, C, D, or E that fits under, but that's, that's a consideration that I think we need to have in mind somewhere.
And I think that, having the applicant here, they could explain why they would want this rezoned and, and how that housing would in fact benefit the city of South Haven. Unfortunately, we don't have that here.
And that's why we're not making the decision tonight, so we can get more public input, if that's possible, based upon our discussion, and so staff has some feeling for what the next step may be.
I move we postpone further discussion until the next meeting.
I support. Been moved and supported. All in favor? Could I ask a question of the staff? Is the next meeting a little too specific, Kelly? Should we maybe say until we can get, till we know that the, until the applicant?
Will be in attendance?
It will be in attendance.
Yes, I would recommend that. I would, I would not recommend postponing specifically until the next meeting, unless you disagree.
Well, the public hearing's still open, so we'd have to keep that going again at the next meeting anyway.
So you think we should postpone till December?
If, if it's not being renoticed, I would be more comfortable postponing to a date certain.
Okay.
We will not renotice the public hearing?
No, right, I mean, that's, that's, that's why I believe it would be more appropriate to postpone to a date certain.
Okay.
I, I guess
What's our next meeting date?
December fourth.
Did the applicant give any indication that they wouldn't be available in December?
They did not indicate that they would not be available, but they did not say for certain. but they did not say for certain that that was the plan. I'm hesitant, just given the last time that we postponed and didn't immediately come back the next month.
Well, we can all go one month at a time, so I'm gonna amend my motion to change or substitute December 4th, right?
December 4th is the next meeting.
And strike next meeting.
Second.
Would you restate the motion, please, Tim?
I move to postpone until the December 4th meeting. I move to postpone further discussion until the December 4th meeting, which is the next meeting, right? December 4th is the date.
And before we vote on that, one of the objectives here was to allow Kelly and/or Nathan enough sense of where we are to have a possible resolution at that December meeting.
Exactly.
Are we there, Kelly, or not? Nathan, do you feel like we are?
I mean, I think, I think potentially that's going to depend on what the applicant says. And so, no. I don't think we're necessarily ready. I mean, I think we can potentially draft some resolutions for you to consider, but those could change significantly, of course.
The way I read the tea leaves is, it's hard for us to deny the request, except for the one factor, such as Janice mentioned, Paul mentioned. Is it going to be long-term housing or short-term resort-type housing? One, you can get behind and support. The other one, not so much. But I don't know if we can dice that apart legally, without getting ourselves into trouble.
All right, then, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor of suspending further discussion until the December 4th meeting date?
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I guess my discussion would be, we would be having the applicant here. We would continue our discussion, and we may not have language for resolution until January.
Well, it's either yes or no, right? What caveats could you put with the resolution?
We'll work on drafting a couple of options, I think. And then, if they need to be edited based on discussion at the meeting, then that's what will happen.
Any other comments on the motion? All in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is approved.
Point of order, just, I believe I need to abstain from this.
Thank you.
To be on the record. And for clarity, I guess, post-abstain for opening the public meeting, since the matter hasn't closed.
All right, then, I think we can move on.
Oh, just point of, a little information. I know in the past when myself and other commissioners have found a conflict of interest, and we recuse ourselves from actually sitting up here during discussion, so there is no confusion.
And there's some.
And then, there's no need to abstain, because you're not here.
There's some merit in that. Some of the consultation I've had seems to think it's fine to remain here or to excuse yourself and sit in the audience.
And I have had personal experience excusing myself from votes, and I have sat in my seat.
So, Bob and I discussed this ahead of time. Bob was going to go on the record and say, because of the two recusals, we would both stay in our respective seats. I don't believe that was said.
I didn't speak to mine, but yes.
We had discussed it, and because this one was more controversial, I had asked that you say something, but things got busy. That's fine, but it's now on the record that Bob and I had discussed it. I had said I would step down. He said that he was not going to step down. I said it should be consistent, and so I remained, because he said he would be remaining.
Yep. And part of what Mary's referring to is that I am in conflict on item seven on the agenda, the special land use application for 220 Park Avenue, because I am in the notice area there. So, I will be in conflict. And I talked with Larry prior to the meeting, and Larry will manage that discussion and the resolution of that. So, that's what Mary is referring to. And consistency is a good thing, and I don't intend to leave my seat, although I guess I could be evicted if. All right, then, can we, are we good? Do we need a temporary adjournment or anything? Kelly, are you good?
If you're operating in a short recess, I think we would take it.
All right, then, let's stand in recess for five minutes? All right, then, we've got a motion and a second. And the next item on our agenda, number six, the special land use application for 304 Ash Street, requesting that special land use application for the purpose of a short-term rental. Kelly, would you like some backstory, please?
Briefly, this is a special land use application for through Ash, which is located in the Harbor Club development, and that is Zoned R2. Property owners would like to use an existing two-family, three-bedroom dwelling unit as a short-term rental, and there is onsite parking for two vehicles, as required. And it is the short-term rental-related zoning amendments from earlier this year that require this to be on your agenda. So, 304 Ash is in the short-term rental overlay district, and we need to review the application and hold a public hearing.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
We do have representation, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, from the applicant tonight. Yes, Emily Westling is here, on behalf of the applicant, to speak about the project.
Please.
Good evening. My name's Emily Westling. I live at 707 Lee Street. And I'm the general manager of Anchor Point Vacations here in South Haven. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of homeowners Allison and James Carter, the owners of 304 Ash Street in the Harbor Club neighborhood. This property is a newly constructed, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath townhome located within the city's short-term rental overlay district. The owners are requesting special land use approval for operation as a short-term rental in accordance with Article 5, Chapter 14 of the zoning ordinance. The home includes ample parking with a two-car garage, additional parking spaces in front of the garage, and access to a community parking lot. The property has one trash bin and one recycle bin. If approved, the property will be professionally managed by Anchor Point Vacation Rentals, ensuring full compliance with city regulations and responsible rental operations within the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions?
I move we open a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is open. Comments, questions from the group or for the property manager? Mary, go ahead.
If you could, thanks. In looking at the garage, I see a door opens into the garage, and the required parking spaces are supposed to be nine foot by 18 feet. Does that infringe on that parking space size in the garage?
Are you asking if the interior service door infringes upon?
I mean, how functional is it with the parking size requirements? I just, it's hard to see what. To make sure that it has the standard parking size required. I just, I know some of the garages can be narrower in that development.
I believe the owners listed a measurement of the garage in the application.
They did. It's 20 and a half by 19 and one inch. And so I was just wondering how far in the door. So that's a, because I just didn't know how functional the parking space was. But I think you could probably get one car in front of the garage, if necessary.
Definitely, yes.
And the garage is free, is actually functional as a garage, as opposed to a game room?
Correct.
Any comments from the public regarding this item?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any discussion about the item in question?
Just one issue I've heard for, you know, garages being designated parking is that they become game rooms. That's what I was asking. And being newly constructed, hopefully it's not. I would appreciate other people's comments about including in the requirements that the garage be maintained for available parking use only. And also, just being proactive, because this is a special land use, and we do have an occupancy requirement that the special land use could be lost for advertising and/or renting above the maximum allowed, because that would be contrary to the law, the ordinance.
I guess my question would be, granting a special land use does not provide capacity. That's going to be done later on, when they make their application, correct?
Occupancy is typically determined at the time of inspection.
So, they could have an occupancy of two or 12. That's not part of the special land use that we grant, correct? That's not part of the special land use that we grant, correct?
The, so the requirement is that the special land use, we're being asked to grant the special land use, and it's for complying with requirements. And part of the requirements will be the maximum occupancy. So it's really a deterrence part to ensure compliance with the special land use granted that the current owner or future owner, so it's not... Could lose special land use for advertising or rent, and/or renting above the maximum occupancy allowed.
I'm not sure how that, I mean, they're gonna get a maximum at time of, you know, they come in and fill out their forms for the license, and they may say, an inspection, hey, your garage is full. You know, what are your plans? We've got a ping-pong table in here. Then that can affect the number of parking spaces and then their occupancy, correct? But that doesn't have to do with the land use. I'm, I'm not sure if we're supposed to be figuring out parking.
So the, the land use is being granted based on the representations of available onsite parking? Because onsite parking is required for short-term rentals now. It's no longer waived for the planned unit development.
And, and it's...
Kelly had a comment, I think. Did you have a comment?
I was going to agree that parking is a consideration in the zoning ordinance now to grant special land use for a short-term rental. Parking is, occupancy is not.
Based on, but they've got the parking, correct?
The, the staff determination is that the parking requirement is met.
Mr. Chair, I want to make a...
Based on the number of bedrooms in the home.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-6.
I would move to amend that resolution. I'm trying to get to it. Okay.
Point of information, Kelly. Over the last several meetings, we continue to have these new business items for special land use. It's a continuing cavalcade of them. And in the, how many do you expect us to encounter as we go forward?
I can't say for certain. They are continuing to come. I'm expecting four next month. I already have one or two for January. So I'm anticipating at least a couple every month.
For...
For the foreseeable future.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, I was confused about the resolution number. On page forty-two of the packet, it says Resolution 2025-XX. I think that should be twenty-six, is that correct?
We, we will fill in the resolution number, yes, but we didn't want to presume the resolution adopted. Should one not be adopted, then the next one numerically...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
In light of what Kelly has said, I'm going to withdraw my motion, and I'm gonna offer a substitute motion, which is that we acknowledge receipt of this application and recommend city council review and determine status.
Recommend city council review this, grant the special land use, is that what you're saying? That's not appropriate, is it?
Well, if we're gonna support it, we can discuss it.
I'll second the motion, just to hear the explanation.
So my reasoning behind this is the rates have gone up considerably for short-term rental. And we're the planning commission, we're not a board to review for short-term rentals. And each week we get, how many pages are in there, twenty, thirty? Each one due to the new short-term rental ordinance. And then I was made aware of a prior planning commissioner, Mike Neese, did some social posts where he says planning commission really shouldn't be considering the short-term rental that city council should. And I do appreciate the fact myself and Clark are on the planning commission. We did serve eight years as elected officials. So that kind of negates a little bit of his post, but I don't think we should be reviewing all of these. I think, or the ordinance needs to be changed. It's just too time-consuming. It's something that should be done at staff level. And I think if we keep sending them...
No disagreement from me.
If we keep sending them to council, council will have to change the ordinance.
In one of the, one of the sessions that I attended, best and best practices, it suggested that we put these kind of decisions into the administrative level and not do them at this, at this level.
I concur, we have this in front of us, though. And I, and I think we need to take care of these three that are in front of us, and then somehow maybe request formally at the end of the meeting, some kind of change in process to council. I don't, I mean, I, I agree with you, but I also feel like we have the ability to, to take care of these tonight, seeing that the work has been done by staff.
So we have a motion that's been, been made and seconded. Any further discussion? And the motion again, would you restate, Tim, please?
It was a substitute motion. Do you have it, Samantha? It was just acknowledged receipt and forward to city council to make the determination.
Okay, so that's the motion, it's been seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Chair, if I could...
Please.
So I think it's ultimately up to the discretion of the planning commission, what they want to do on this motion. I would point out, however, that zoning ordinance, Section 1902, subsection four, states that within a reasonable time following the receipt of all materials, the planning commission shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the special land use application. Now, in theory, it doesn't expressly state this. You could postpone, but I do have a concern that the motion as stated essentially leaves this application completely open and not resolved. To the extent that that could be deemed a denial, there may be risk of a legal challenge. So again, I would leave it up to the discretion of the planning commission what to do with this motion, but I have a concern that it is not in compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Understood, so I did leave it open, but I can, that we acknowledge receipt and recommend they approve it. That would be my amended motion.
Recommend city council approve it?
Can the...
Now it's not open anymore.
I don't believe that based on our ordinance, the city council has the authority to approve special land uses.
No, city council does not have the ability to approve a special land use.
And if I may interject, so Kelly and I and three others were on the subcommittee that drafted the plan, and this was the process recommended to us. And there was no resistance to this recommendation in the committee, to the best of my recollection. Kelly, do you recall?
I'll withdraw my second. And ends the discussion.
There you go. Clean slate for you, Bob.
So it seems to have died. You could say that it has died due to lack of second. And then I guess I would make a motion then to approve special land use for the short-term rental at 305 Ash Street.
304.
304 Ash Street, and that would be Resolution 2025 dash, and that number to be determined by staff.
Second.
Give it to Mike. Any discussion, any further discussion? Moved and seconded?
And I would just, I would move to add to one that, under the therefore, one D, that the requirements meeting the special land use be maintained during the use.
I'm sorry, the, what, be maintained what?
A sub-D and insert...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That the onsite parking will be maintained to meet the land, meet the zoning requirements.
Okay, so that would be item D under number one. Now therefore be it resolved, that one, A, B, C, and D, about the parking being maintained.
That the onsite parking be maintained.
So that's a motion to amend the motion, correct?
Motion to amend the resolution through insertion of D.
Is there a second?
And that is number D?
Letter D, one D.
I think it's on page forty-three of the packet, I believe.
One D, okay.
So there's no second.
So there was no second to that?
Well, I haven't heard one, is there a second?
Can we have a restatement?
Insert D, that onsite parking be maintained to comply with zoning requirements.
Second. Any other discussion?
I, I don't understand why we're doing this. And, and my question is, there are a bunch of requirements. And, and that's why we have an organization that oversees the rentals to ensure they meet other requirements, like how many people are in the house. In this particular case, there's at least four parking spots, so...
Two in the garage, two in the driveway.
But that's not really the key point. The key, I, I don't understa-, I, we have a mechanism for oversight. The mechanism needs to work. I don't think we should be putting, adding things in here. I don't think it's necessary to add things in here.
And what about all our previous special land uses we've ever approved? Do we have to go back and re redo those? I think, I thought that was just part of the land use. And then after that, we've got the oversight recognition.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question. Samantha, could we have a roll call, please? Voting...
On the amendment.
Right.
Who supported it?
Who supported it?
Eddie.
Oh, you did, Eddie.
Eddie supported it, okay.
Okay, then Samantha, do you have the amendment? Could we have a roll call, please?
Campbell?
No.
Fenton?
No.
Gruber?
No.
Heineck?
No.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Stegman?
No.
Barney?
No.
Sherman?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, that was the amendment, but we have the motion to approve. Any further discussion on that motion?
Oh, just one thing. Sorry for the inconvenience, but I wanted to point out, especially Mike Neese, that no, we can't kick this up to the elected officials. It has to be determined here.
I thought upward delegation was a, a, a best practice in business.
So the unelected officials have to determine the short-term rental status.
All right, then we have a motion to approve. Samantha, could you give us a roll call on that, please? This is 2025 dash, maybe twenty-six TBD.
Fenton?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Heineck?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Stegman?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, seven, 220 Park Avenue. I mentioned earlier that my property is in the notice area for that, so I am conflicted. And Commissioner Heineck will manage the discussion and the resolution of this item.
Kelly, do you have some comments?
Great, thank you. Michael Lang has submitted an application for special land use at 220 Park. 220 Park is also in the short-term rental overlay district. It is in the RM1 zoning district just north of Dykman. And the existing home is five bedrooms, and there is onsite parking for more than four vehicles. And we need to hear from the applicant and have a public hearing.
Is the applicant or a representative here? If you could come to the microphone, please. Add anything that you wish to...
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your time. I know it's been a long evening for everyone, and hopefully everything else was much more contentious than this. But I appreciate your time, and just wanted to tell you why I'm here. This started off for my wife and I, and my wife's down with kids and unable to be here. And I'm Mike Lang, owner of 220 Park. And we started this as we've been here in South Haven renting a couple, couple times. Loved the place, saw a place that came open. And this is really truly to be a second home for us. And it's not really intended to be someplace that we're gonna rent out all the time and is trying to be like a profit lever for us. It's really just a way for us to defray some costs and use it as a second term, a second, second home. And what that, you know, means for the neighbors in the town is that our goal for this is that we keep it as nice as when we want to be there. And that's what I'm more concerned about with anything. I, I don't want it to be like the bachelor party house or the bachelor party house or, you know, anything like that. I mean, we're not gonna discriminate against people, but I'm gonna be, you know, I'm, I'm a lawyer. My wife's in real estate. We're, we're going to really screen people because we want to make sure that this is not like a party house. That is the furthest thing that we want. And I just do want to point out, big, long driveway, I think it's like a hundred and seventeen feet long. More than enough parking, but my goal is that we don't use all the parking because that's not the kind of people I want renting my house. Because I plan on spending three to four weeks in the summer here. And honestly, I just kind of want somebody and anyone that's vacant because vacancy leads to problems from my perspective, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, so won't take any more of your time.
Okay, we'll, we'll go to the public hearing and then our discussion, so be prepared for questions later on.
Okay.
Thank you.
I move to open a public hearing.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, open hearing, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Public hearing is open. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us on this item, come to the microphone. State your name and address. You have five minutes. I don't see a rush to the microphone. I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, the public hearing is closed. Questions, discussion items?
Chair? I do, so some of the neighbors had raised a concern in the Sandcastle with how close the home is at 220 to their home. And I was looking at it online and using GIS and looking at the dimensional setback requirements for RM1. And the side setback is twelve feet. The front and back setbacks are twenty-five feet. And it's not clear on GIS if those setbacks can be met, at least the side setback, especially closest to the Sandcastle, which is the people who had raised a concern with the closeness of it. That's what made me think to look at it. And so Kelly, I looked at it after you and I spoke. Do we have, I, I was trying to find any information about setbacks, and I know that there was a map in here, but it, to the best that I could read it, it does not provide setbacks.
You're gonna page sixty-three, is that?
Yes.
That's the only one I saw.
And that, it gave lengths and widths, but it doesn't give the setback of the building to the property line. And unfortunately, attempts in the GIS, the resolution was not very good. It seemed... uh, the resolution was not very good. Um, it seemed to be nine feet, but resolution was poor, so. I didn't know if the applicant could provide that information.
I can't provide the exact distance between the property line, you know, in any point of the house over on that side at that, at this point. You know, to the extent that they do have concerns, my guess is, is that, as you mentioned, that it's close. And that, my guess is, is that, and I haven't read the comments, I haven't seen them, you know, beyond what you just enunciated, if it's only really a concern obviously on that side, obviously on, on the north side, much more space, you know, with the north owner, we'd be happy, you know, and would commit if it would satisfy folks, you know, to install a fence or some other sort of aesthetic barrier if that would, you know, if that would ease, you know, ease concerns.
Yeah, um, what is the room? I think it's above the garage, it's second floor. I know it has a window facing west.
Both of the rooms that face, that would face, above the garage, that would face them, those are bedrooms.
Yeah, I just, um, we just know with second floor, the fences don't very, work very well. I just have concerns similar to what people raise concerns with, um, at, construction at another location, just closeness of the homes to the property lines. Um, I do know that other, at a home north of you had raised concerns, and I know several people in, um, Cannery Row had raised concerns about additional sound, um, from a short-term rental. I know that five bedrooms, even though it's five bedrooms, um, occupancy is kept at twelve under the new ordinance.
So I, I would point out, it's not really, it was listed, it's five bedrooms. Obviously, I didn't do the listing. It's really four bedrooms with like a den, so I don't plan on putting a bed, bed in there, and I'm happy to commit to that. So if that assuages any concerns, I'm happy to admit to that. I'd also would point out that that back part of the building, I think was built in twelve or thirteen, and so it went, would have gone through a permitting process and, or whatever to make sure that they met setbacks at that time.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yep. Well, let's, let's take care of Mary's questions first.
No, I, I, I don't think my questions can be answered. Thank you for the comments. That was helpful.
I, it, just a point of understanding for me, if there's a, a ho- a building, a home, that is, it is legal but non-conforming, at the time it was built, it was legal, and we've changed the zoning requirements, setback requirements, so it no longer meets those requirements. Is there anything in the short-term rental process that would preclude that rental? My, my belief is, the answer is no. And if there's not, it, it would. It would, it would appear to me as though we, we really don't, I mean, we could encourage the owner to do things, but as long as they're in compliance with the requirements, even if they don't currently meet the setback requirements, and there are homes in our neighborhood that do not meet the setback requirements, I wouldn't think that would preclude them from receiving a short-term rental permit. And that's kind of what we're talking about, I think.
Well, I, we, we haven't taken any action that way yet.
No, 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 but I, I think.
Kelly, is there, is there anything in the inspection process that, uh, addresses this?
That it would address the setbacks on the property?
Yeah.
No, the inspection process is really focused on, um, safety. It's a safety inspection primarily.
And, okay. And Vice, Vice Chair, I, I do have a, a quite, or I, at least a comment that I can give, and this would be what, for those in Cannery Row and the neighbors, and this would be a real-world, I think, experience when it comes to the short-term rental and, and process proximity and, and nuisances, because there are remedies for that, you know, through the eight-hundred number and making the phone calls. And my home, uh, I have a small lot, so it's fifty by one hundred. I share a fifty-foot, uh, property line with a short-term rental that was grandfathered in previously, so it has a capacity of sixteen. Now, and that's to my, to my north, to my west, I share a hundred-foot property line with another short-term rental that was also grandfathered in with sixteen. And that's actually ten feet between our two walls of our building. And I measured it the other day just because I thought, I thought it was ten, so I went and verified. It is ten foot. And then across the street, which would be similar to Cannery Row, is another short-term rental, and it has capacity of twelve. So that's forty-four neighbors. And no issues, no problems all summer long, all fall long, all spring long, you know. And probably like Mr. Lang, who wants to spend time here, I didn't include the neighbor across the street, who I, they probably do four weeks a year of rentals, and then they stay there the other time. Uh, and I've never met one of the sixteens, the owners, ever. And I, and it's run by one of the local firms, and I just don't have any problems with any of that. And I have thirty-two that are on my property line. Uh, so just to give real-world experience of what it's like to have very large, uh, heavily-used properties.
Mr. Chairman, um, I would also point out that, uh, if we were to grant the special land use permit and then based upon the neighbors' reporting of excessive noise, there is a procedure for the, uh, suspension or revocation of that special land use because there are supplemental review standards for short-term rentals. As, as being a special land use in nineteen oh four dash thirty-seven, it says, "No short-term rental shall be operated in a manner that constitutes a nuisance to adjoining land uses by the creation of excess noise, smoke, odor, or the creation of unreasonable traffic to the premises." We know noise is an issue, but there is a, there is an actual process for a remedy for this that could result in the suspension or revocation of the special land use if it became a problem and the owner was not taking care of it.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we, uh, adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven, parentheses, question mark, parentheses.
Second.
Chairman, I have further discussions?
Yep, discussion's open.
With regard to the noise ordinance, it is antiquated. It is very difficult to enforce. And, um, what happens when you call the hotline, is there more focused on getting compliance and the noise goes away as the police show up, and then the noise can restart? Um, and that is the que- that, that is the concern. And I think we've always said that the majority of short-term rentals are compliant. And I don't mean any disrespect, but we, thank you. Um, it just takes one bad rape to, to spoil the, the whole bunch. And I recall hearing from over Labor Day about a bachelor, bachelorette party, naked, uh, dimensions, you know, uh, blow-ups in the yard, loud noises, things like that. Um, and that's, so I understand the concerns of neighbors. And it's the unknown. That's the problem. It's the unknown. And this, this building had never been a short-term rental, and I know that short-term rentals are fairly prevalent in that area. So that is my concern. And, you know, not knowing the setbacks, um, because it is a special land use and proximity of a commercial use in a residential district, I think, gives reason of concern uh, for, for that very specific matter under the circumstances.
Mr. Chairman?
We have a, we have a motion on the floor. Is further discussion?
I'll, I'll, I'll call the vote.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I will tend to. Thank you very much. Well, well done, Larry. Uh, that takes us to item eight on the agenda. Another special land use application, five eleven Phoenix Street. It's a little different because this is, uh, in the central business district. Kelly, do you want to tell us about this one?
Sure. Five eleven Phoenix is our, uh, first application in the central business district for short-term rental. Um, this is unit two, which is located above the twelve corners, uh, tasting room. And there are three bedrooms in this dwelling unit. And there is actually some onsite parking here behind the building. Um, they've indicated four spaces, um, based on measurements, um, probably only three. Um, but there's an easement there for ingress and egress, uh, through the municipal parking lot. And the municipal parking lot is available for parking as well. So we've got Emily again to represent this project, and we need to have a public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
Can we hear from the?
Oh, sorry.
You're, thank you.
Please go ahead, Emily.
Hello again, Emily Westling, um, general manager of Anchor Point. This time I'm representing five eleven Phoenix Street, um, five eleven and a half, actually. Um, I'm here on behalf of owners Mark and Kathleen. They were unable to attend tonight, so I'm respectfully representing their special land use application. This property is a three-bedroom, single-family condominium located in the central business district overlay, where short-term rentals are permitted as a special land use under the city's zoning ordinance. Approval of this special land use will allow the homeowners to later apply for a short-term rental permit and ultimately offer their home for occasional short-term stays when they are not personally using it. Allowing this home to participate in the downtown lodging market supports our visitor economy, bringing guests into the walkable downtown area to enjoy and support South Haven's shops, restaurants, and local businesses throughout the year. This is an area intentionally planned for mixed use, and this use aligns with that vision. In terms of site standards, the home provides ample off-street parking within a parking lot behind the building. Renters will have access to the property's existing shared dumpster behind the building, ensuring waste is properly managed and contained. If approved, this home will be professionally overseen by Anchor Point. We take pride in responsible and compliant property management, including proactive guest communication, monitoring to ensure rules are followed, and a strong emphasis on supporting peaceful and respectful neighborhood conditions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Emily. We may have further questions, but appreciate your information. Now, Mary?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, opening a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing is open. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this, uh, request for five eleven Phoenix Street? Chairman, I move to close the public hearing?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed. Discussion.
Oh.
Um, I was just curious because I think they had attempted to get a a short-term rental before, and it was deemed not a condo, but the staff report identifies it as being condominiumized. So.
That was a curious word, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The building is condominiumized, but there is only one dwelling unit, so it's not an attached, it's not attached to another condominium. And so they weren't determined to be exempt under the previous ordinance.
Okay. And then for the central business, I think they just need one space, right? Which is well-satisfied. Because we had separate parking for the central business district.
But no parking requirement for short-term rentals in the central business district.
Okay. It's just because parking was discussed. I just wanted to make sure that there was.
Just pointing out that this unit, unlike others that may come in the special, in the, uh, CBD, does have parking.
Thanks for clarifying. Other comments, discussion, questions?
Mr. Chairman, uh, the representative said the address is five eleven and a half. Kelly, do you need to change that in the resolution, or is the half also known as unit two?
Our records list it as unit two.
Okay.
And in the parcel, it says number two.
Other discussion?
The one-half may be a mailing address.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a resolution approving a special land use application for short-term rental use at five eleven Phoenix Street, unit two.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Application is approved. Moving on, number nine, item nine in our agenda, the planned unit development. This is a little bit, uh, different than our standard fare. Seven oh six, seven twelve Virginia. It's an interesting piece of property. Be careful of the residence of River Ridge, which is the adjoining property. Kelly, do you want to give us some backstory?
Uh, the, the parcels at seven oh six and seven twelve Vir- Virginia Avenue are just south of River Ridge and, um, and behind some dwelling units that actually, um, front Kentucky Avenue. So I know some of you that tried to find it may not have had an easy time locating it. The access to the parcel is actually through River Ridge. Um, the total site is about seven acres. Um, the property owners, Mike and Carrie Lynch, would like to develop six family, si- single-family homes with some associated amenities, um, like dock, a dock and some boat slips along the river. This project was reviewed by the Harbor Commission previously and recommended for approval. So I know we're not to the site plan, uh, review phase of this project yet, but just for your information, it has been reviewed by the Harbor Commission already. Um, based on the dimensions, these lots could have been developed separately via lot split, but the street frontage is not available to meet minimum requirements to split the lots. Um, like I mentioned, there is an easement that provides access to the site across River Ridge's driveway, and there are utility easements, um, to the south through Virginia. And their only deviation request at this time is related to sidewalks. Since there is no street frontage, the applicant has requested not to provide sidewalks at the site. Brad, do you have anything that you would like to add at this time?
Um, I was just going to say initially, they had the two deviation requests, and one was the multi.
Yes.
This is on a single property, but because this is being developed as a so- as a condominium development, um, that's unnecessary for that particular deviation, so they are formally requesting a deviation from internal and connecting sidewalks to the city network.
Is, is it unnecessary at this time and maybe necessary in the future?
The way we looked at it is trying to figure out how much, it's, it's very tucked back off of the, the system. There's not, there are some sidewalks in the area, but they're also, the city doesn't have a very good network system in this area as well. Um, the amount of onsite traffic that these folks would be having for their own personal use, um, is really undetermined, and I believe they're planning on just using their, the private roads and the trails that they have developed or designed onsite as their ability to traverse around the property.
Okay, because I know in other PUDs, we have, uh, made it where they didn't have to be built now, but would it have been at a future date? This one would preclude that. This is just no sidewalks ever, right?
Correct.
So we do have the applicant team from Edworks here tonight to answer questions. We need to have a public hearing and, uh, have some discussion, but we're not asking for a decision this evening. Based on your discussion, we'll get resolution and approval documents ready for, um, next time. Based on your discussion, we'll get resolution and approval documents ready for next time.
All right, then. We do need to open a public hearing?
I move we open a public hearing?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to open a public hearing. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Hearing is open. Any citizens here who would like to speak to this item on Virginia Avenue?
Good evening. My name is Holly Boyd. I'm a permanent resident for about 20 years at 507 Virginia Avenue. And there's been conversation in regards to this property, which we've met the owners and they're lovely folks. But it looks like that they're going to access their property from our property, which is private and we own it. We've purchased it, and it butts up to their property. And that would be off of Kentucky. And one of our owners sent an email to Mary earlier today, and I think he spoke very eloquently, so I'm just going to read that to you so you're aware of our concerns. It seems to be some confusion about the easement, what the easement will allow. The easement going through the northwest corner of our property is for utilities only and necessary connections. It is not intended to be a temporary road for construction or thoroughfare. Any excavation that is made will be done in the manner that will protect our property and our facilities from flooding, because it's on a curve that comes down and would hit our pool. So that is our concern. And if and when any construction for the planned units or the connection to utilities is done, everything will be left as was on our property. When roads are put in for the six planned units, care will be taken to establish proper storm, water, drain, and protection of properties surrounding development prior to hard services being put in. I'm telling you this, and he was explaining that the surveyors came out and told us that a road would be put in to connect to our drive. And he wanted to make this clear that this was not going to happen. And Mr. Arlington was the person that wrote this email to Mary at 1:28 today. And he also has worked for Miller Davis for 30, 40 years, so he knows what construction does. So we just want to make sure that you are aware of our concerns at North Haven Village, which are the pastel condos on the river, if any of you know. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
The map in the packet on page 106 is not...
We're still in the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Still in the public hearing.
Thank you for the reminder. Anyone else who'd like to speak to this topic?
I move we close the public hearing, second.
Moved and supported to close the public hearing. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, should we invite the applicants to come forward and speak a little bit?
Of course. The applicants are here, I guess.
Yes, we've got Spencer and Greg from Edgewater.
Okay, yes, yes.
Hello. So in regards to the road coming in from the south on the access and utility easement through that property, it is not intended as a daily use. It's intended as emergency access only. The plan is for it to be reinforced turf. So it would look like grass, but it would be capable of being driven on by emergency vehicles and would only be used during those emergency times.
Shouldn't I have spoken? Shouldn't he have spoken first and then I come up? So I would have been more aware of the situation.
Do we know if that, if that would be signed that way? As emerg, you know, emergency access only? So it doesn't turn into like, hey, this is a lot easier to get?
We definitely could. It's only being proposed for six homes, though, so it's not like it's going to be a ton of traffic constantly.
If, if, if I may?
Please.
One concern I had with regard to the easements is they are older. They are very difficult to read the easement themselves. And I would like it clearly identifying on any future map, not only for that easement, but also the one on the north side. Because I think River Ridge is also going to be concerned. I had a call from them about 5:30 today that with the time lapse and the use, I think the neighbors need to make sure that they are all aligned with what the easement allows before it comes to us. I don't think that we should be approving any plan that would potentially cause one neighbor to have to sue the other neighbor. I think we need to have it legally sound at the time it comes to us that the easements allow you to do what you're proposing.
Okay.
That seems like good planning.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Are we saying that this property has no legal access? Really? Well, that's what it sounds like.
I think it depends on what the easement on the north provides. And it's not clear whether it's over the current road of River Ridge or whether their easement is beside that road and they need to build a road. That's what I would, I would really like to understand where, specifically where the property lines are, where the easements are, and make sure that the parties on each end agree with that.
Should the commission want to approve it? It could be conditional on legal access and, you know, filing with staff, the proper paperwork.
I'm uncomfortable conditionally granting something with such a legal ramification.
We do it all the time.
But we're not being asked to approve this today.
Being asked to create a PUD. Oh, right?
Not today.
Not today.
Sorry, yes, yeah.
And also, you know, Mary is pointing out some things to help with that approval process to put into that. I mean, if we, if they finally identify both utility and main access and it does in fact share a driveway, you know, long-term maintenance of that driveway would then be shared by two properties. Then we also have to look at if that easement was always there, you know, and the other owner put in a road and they are aware of the easement, should have been aware of the easement when they put in the road. You know, there's, there's a lot there. And certainly, you know, Edgewater knows what they're doing, and we're giving staff some direction. So this is only done once, and there isn't a lawsuit down the road. And we're helping both parties make this happen. Because I think it's a great project and also for the planning commission. So let's help make it...
Well, other than the easement, is anything wrong with what's being proposed? That's what staff's asking.
I don't understand the access from Virginia. The maps are not helping me. I've driven the property, walked or the perimeter of the property, and even drove up the private property where there are four condos, five condos perhaps, whose back is on the river. Is that where the access would come?
No, that's a little confusing.
It is.
So technically, River Ridge's private road is considered Virginia Avenue.
Really?
I believe so. Or that's just the property address, sorry. So Virginia Avenue is, has a vacated right-of-way where that previous, where the southeast end is that was supposed to connect to Virginia Avenue, I believe. And that's where the address comes from. But access would be gained from Kentucky Avenue through River Ridge's driveway.
And that easement is already in place?
Yes.
And the road does not go into these parcels right now? That road would have to be built from the River Ridge parcel or from the River Ridge driveway, I guess, right?
Yes.
And have you talked with anyone at River Ridge?
Yeah, we've been in contact with them. Yeah, we've been talking with them. We're looking at kind of renegotiating the easement a little bit, but it still does provide shared access to this parcel.
Okay.
And there is language in the easement talking about shared maintenance costs as well.
So the person who called me was not aware of anything. So I was, what I was going to do is provide Kelly the contact information that she could share with you.
That'd be great.
Again, I got the call at 5:30 tonight, so... Brad, I have a question for you.
Yes.
I thought, I know that North Haven Village is, has a HOA and also has condominium units. But you referred to this piece of property as, you use the word condominium. So I didn't understand what you were, because I thought we were just looking at the PUD.
Essentially, the applicant confirmed this, but from what we understand is they're developing as a site condominium, so they would have to establish a condominium association.
Okay, so the condominium association is within the PUD.
Correct. On the map, and if Kelly had that up there right now, the site plan, you would see actually the boundaries of the site units themselves with the bounding drives around the outside, all of that area, including that central area where the Dry Creek Bed area runs through, would all be that common element space. Along with the docks. Along with the docks.
And there would be a way to cross that, there would be a way to cross that Dry Creek? Or is that a significant barrier from the Lynch's property to the other sites?
Yes, we'd be planning to cross the Dry Creek Bed at the north side.
As a drivable cross or as a pedestrian cross of that?
Drivable cross.
Okay.
I'm struggling with how you can use the utility easement as an emergency access.
In the easement languages that we have from the title documents, it says it is a easement for utilities and ingress and egress as well.
Could you come, could you come?
We're specifically not creating it as a separate access. We're creating it simply as a, it's an emergency, only it's turf. When you look at it, it'll look like lawn. Almost if you put a sign saying it's emergency access only, you're almost saying, you could drive here. You're not supposed to. Anyway, that was, that was the perspective, is trying to keep all the vehicle access at the north end. And this is simply because the fire trucks need to have a second way in.
So in this area, it's, I mean, there's several elevation changes. Where are the wetlands located and how are those going to be impacted?
Well, so if you look at Development Lot Three, that large patch is a wetland. So technically, in order to access Development Lot Three, Development Lot Four would have to have a shared drive with them. Or the development lot could just be developed as one lot.
So is the wetland going to be filled in?
No, we are not. Right now, we are working on our Eagle permit, and we will not be trying to gain a permit to fill those wetlands. We'll be leaving them alone.
But how will they be impacted? So offensive. The other concern would be in HOAs, application of chemicals for nice green lawns have a negative impact on our waterways. What would you propose to ensure that it's not negatively impacted from chemical use?
The requirements will comply with all the Eagle requirements for wetland protection.
And the elevation changes, it looks like the road traversing down to the down to the river where the slips will be, is that higher elevation? And what is being done to prevent erosion? I mean, what's the top, construction of the land? Is it mainly sand, which is less stable?
It's silty clay, I believe. And are you talking about the common dock access parking? Or are you talking about the stairs down to the docks?
I mean, all of that, and you have, I've got, I mean, you've got the, if I'm, if I read it, if I'm looking at it correctly, so is that road traversing it at the top? I am just, for the topographical, because it...
Kelly, can you, sorry, can you pull it down a little? I think what might be confusing, so the roadways run around the perimeter on the outside. So you come in at the north, and then there's a roadway that goes to the east, to that roundabout. And then from there, it's a driveway down to that property there. And so if we go back up and back to the entry, there's a roadway that goes in and down the west side to those parcels there. That shape down the middle, the gap between those boxes, and you see that, that what might look like a road in the middle, that sort of gray thing?
Yes.
That is, that is not a roadway. That's the, that's the Dry Creek, and that's the big deep V. So all the development is up on the high ground on both sides, and the whole, the whole valley and the whole cut is undeveloped at all. We're not putting anything in there. And that's, so it might look like, or that gray thing is actually, what is that specifically on the drawing in?
Just a Dry Creek bed.
It's a Dry Creek bed. So that might look like a road that's not a road. So the development is all up on the high outside, and there's a, there's a valley in, sort of a ravine down the middle, and we're staying out of that entirely.
So then will the boats then come up the river? You will not be putting them in or taking them out at the dock?
Correct. Those are just, they're just docks. That's all. There's no, there's no boat. Nobody's going to be launching a boat on the site.
The map on page 106 of the agenda packet appears to show only four, I'll say slips in there. But I thought in the description, it said there would be six.
Those are double slips, so...
Ah, okay.
So only the three interior ones are slips.
Okay, got it.
The ones on the outside will not be slip. There'll be some piles there to prevent any damage to the docks.
Okay.
Coming downstream. And then the far-left one will just be a common dock to be used for paddle crafters.
Yeah, I see, common jet ski parking. And what I take to be topographical lines, that's a fairly steep slope down to that dry bed, isn't it? Yeah. That's going to present some challenges for you.
That's what the stairs are there for, yeah. Yeah.
So this is almost seven acres, right? And so, like, simple terms, why would you want a PUD as opposed to dividing it up into lots?
So I thought we needed a PUD because we were going to have multiple primary dwelling units or primary buildings on one single lot. But I believe we're doing it because we also want to, we don't feel that there's a need for internal sidewalks within this property. It was either the two deviations we requested.
Administratively, we can't split the lots because there's no street frontage.
So that's what it, that's what it boils down to, in essence, is you guys okay with that? And if you are, then staff will write up the proper, what is it, the PUD? So is this more of a straw poll vote or, yeah? So I think you're set up right now to make a determination.
Were you going to say something else, Kelly?
No, I would suggest, if you've got any additional comments for staff or questions for the applicants that you'd like to have answered for when they come back next time, then that would be a good time to do it.
Any questions that we're going to want answered in the next meeting?
Nothing, other than clarification on the easements on each one. And I think more notice than just the Friday before for the, the parties that have the easements with you. It'd be nice to make sure that the parties on the south and the north are in agreement with your interpretation of the easement.
Could I ask a question about that? I'm curious. Who determines, the easement is clear language. We read it, we see what it says, and we believe what it says. Do we ask staff to say?
Do we ask staff to say, staff agrees that the agreement says this allows for utilities and emergency access? Because, I, I'm disrespectful, but if you're saying, if a neighbor disagrees with that interpretation, how, how, how would, how would one determine that?
I, I, so my own, my position is that the grantor and grantee of the easement would have the same agreement, I mean, same interpretation of what would or would not be allowed, and the obligations of each. So that, we don't, there's no questions, that you're on the same page as to the breadth of the easement and the obligations of each party.
So is the easement recorded with the properties, does, does that exist already? I messaged staff, I guess I'm just curious, like, where is the easement recorded? Because, to me, the easement shouldn't be a, a matter of interpretation, if it's recorded with the city, the easement says what it says. And if, if, uh, if a neighbor just says, I, I don't think that's what it says, how, that seems to be a setup, it would, it would, uh, set up for a disagreement long-term. I understand your point, is let's not have that disagreement, my question is, what's the proper way of resolving that disagreement? Would it be a question of a, the city attorney reading it and going, my statement is that it says this? Uh, how, how do we, how do we get that resolution, that's my question, I, I, clearly, it would be lovely if we all agreed, but apparently we don't at this point, and I'm just curious, how we, how do we get that resolved?
I mean, do you have the easements, there were easements in the package.
Yeah.
Are there other easements that are?
Yeah, we, 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 yeah, we, we clearly interpret it as what we're suggesting, that the south one is an ingress egress, what we're proposing is that to use it only for utilities and only for emergency access. We interpret the easement to say we, we theoretically have the right to make it a full access, we're choosing not to do that. And that's, hope, would hopefully be a good gesture, um, and just have the access to the north. So my, my, my simple question is, like, we, we clearly interpret it to allow us to do what we're saying, and we haven't had any perspective from that yet, I'm curious, how do we? You know, if, if a neighbor says, I don't think it says that, who, who's the, who's the arbiter of that disagreement?
So.
Respect, I'm not, I'm just, just trying to.
It's going to be whatever's filed with the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is, um, the HOA president spoke with Kate, and things seemed to be okay, but I don't know what those conversations entailed. That's, I mean, that's what I got later in the day, I mean, I.
That, that's why staff's going to review this, not our job at this moment.
So I, I guess what, what we'll do moving forward is we'll review with staff and, and city staff, and presuming, presumably, that if city staff agree that the easement says what we're saying is allowed in the easement, we would, that would be our response to that.
And then they'll recommend we approve your PUD, that's usually how this works.
And then the neighbors who disagree will show up with their attorneys, and we'll have to figure it out.
I don't know how else to handle it, I'm just curious, I mean, so. I'm, I'm not just being, I'm just trying to understand, how, how do we resolve the question, is all I'm asking, so thank you.
If the planning commission would like us to ask our legal counsel to review the easements, we're happy to do that, um, and that would be step one of staff resolving our end, at least.
I think you're going to.
Of the question.
I think you're going to have to, because this is rather unique.
I think so too.
So, yes, I mean, our, our.
But there's a dispute.
If, if there's a desire from the planning commission or staff for our office to review the easement, we're happy to do so, I, I, you know, the, the standards for approving or denying a PUD are set forth in section eighteen twelve of the ordinance. Uh, the question about the easement came up late this afternoon, my office has not looked at it at all beyond a very preliminary review of what we were sent. So, you know, to the extent that a question of the easement impacts those standards, we can provide a recommendation to you. But whatever the dispute over the easement may be, may not even be relevant to any of those standards, and it may be something that is truly a dispute between private properties, or, or private, uh, parties. So.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're happy to review, but the question of, you know, who has the final say, I can't really answer that now, because all of this came up, you know, about a couple hours before the meeting, so. To the extent that, you know, it would be probably helpful for the planning commission perhaps to give clear direction to staff in our office about what they would like brought back at the next meeting. Whether that is a formal resolution, just some sort of analysis, it would be helpful to know what exactly you want from us.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would recommend that, because I'll give you a case study, um, the old George Marine, that property was sold. Um, but prior to that, the docks had been sold to another group, and so when the Marina sold, a developer wanted to build condos, and, in essence, shut off the easement to everybody that owned all those docks. And that was a big problem for a while. So, this, this one I would recommend we, we take a little closer look at, what both parties have, rather than letting the parties dispute it later on.
Are we okay then, Kelly, we'll have legal look at these easements carefully, and come back at a future meeting, December meeting?
Yes.
And.
Do, do we then also want to have some kind of resolution that we can either accept or deny to move that forward on behalf of the petitioner? And counsel?
Yes, this is, um, a, a project that will go to the city council.
So we want to make sure we have the ability to make a recommendation for them in a timely manner.
My concern is that, yes, if our attorney looks at it, that would be shared with the applicant, but the residents who are dis- disagreeing potentially would not see it until the pack is issued, so they're at a time disadvantage to challenge whatever our attorney says. Is there a way to involve the HOA and the River Ridge people in this process before it comes back to the, to the planning commission? Because five days is not very helpful for somebody, especially if it's going to be in December, be right after Thanksgiving and right before the holidays. How can we proceed so that all the parties are on the same page, and the same recommendation, in as timely a fashion as possible?
I think step one is for staff to connect with, um, the city attorney and begin the review of the documentation.
Yep.
The, I, I'm still confused about the layout of some of these, uh, drawings, the emergency access on the map appears to be directly across from Preserve Drive that goes into Harbor Club. I'm looking at page one oh seven.
Yes, sir.
Scroll down to the bottom of that, Kelly, maybe? Yeah, right there, so you see Preserve Drive on the left, that goes into Harbor Club, but this emergency access, utility access, is directly across from that. And you're referring to that as Virginia Avenue, but that's not Virginia Avenue, maybe it somehow has a Virginia Avenue address?
It's a vacated right-of-way.
Okay, so it retains that address?
I don't know how the property got its address.
Yeah, Virginia Avenue is, is well south of that, and runs in front of the, um, the condos that are there, and what is that, Oak Harbor or Woodland Harbor, what's the harbor there? Oak Harbor? That's, that's Virginia Avenue, but according to street signs, and if you Google it or whatever, so that's, that's where my confusion is, I drove this area a couple of times, and was fairly confused.
It is a confusing area, I can't speak right now on the history of what is now Virginia versus what was Virginia, but I would, um, encourage you not to worry about the name of this access point so much as just.
And I, I won't, now, now I see where it is, and now I see where it is.
Yes.
All right, so we'll get some clarification on what these easements say, I agree with Mary, if that can be done in a manner that allows others to have access. At least to those, uh, conclusions.
I, so, and look, when you brought up one oh seven, I'm looking at it, this actually has seven lots, the, the layout is slightly different.
It is, yes.
It's the parallel plan.
It's the parallel plan.
That's a parallel development plan, it's a requirement.
And that is noted on the, on the side. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chair, I still don't have clear direction, are we only coming back with an answer regarding the easements, or are we coming back with a potential resolution? And if so, what are the resolution, what is the resolution, or what are the resolutions you would like us to prepare?
I, I think this hinges on, if the easement is okay, then we're able to proceed with the rest of the PUD. But if there's not a valid easement, property's landlocked, and I don't think we'll be going through any process, right?
So I guess then, just clarification on the easements, and we won't even worry about a resolution until that's before us. Are we in agreement there?
I think so, the way I understand it.
Yep. So, so that would, just to clarify then, that would be at least two more meetings, we'll come back next month with discussion on the easement, and then you would be giving us direction.
I think so, why, why don't we have an easement prepared? To go ahead with it, and if.
You mean a resolution?
A resolution, I'm sorry, to go ahead with it, and if the easements don't look good when we see that, then we don't, we, we don't approve it.
Yeah, we, we, if I may speak, I'm sorry, we've, we've worked with city staff on this for quite some time, I would respectfully suggest we believe the easement says what it says, and we haven't had anything to the contrary, and, and no disrespect, I'd like to ask more questions of you, but the, the point would be is, presuming the easement is a sound, we should, and the rest of it is sound, then I would respectfully request that we could move forward. If it's determined that the easement's not sound and there's an issue, then, then it just wouldn't come back up, and we, we, we would proceed with dealing with that issue at that time.
Right.
That's okay.
Sounds right.
Okay. Are we good, Kelly? Nathan, are we good with you?
Yes.
All righty, any other discussion? We're not taking any action here, so I think we can move forward, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item eleven, oh no, I'm sorry, uh, item ten, public comment. Citizens in the audience may address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda, anyone want to speak to an item not on the agenda? Apparently not, so we can go to item eleven, master plan and the city council statement of objections.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, tonight you all are being asked to receive the city council statement of objections to the twenty twenty-five master plan update. As you may recall, the council received the planning commission master plan, or updates to the master plan at the September fifteen council meeting, and voted to reject the plan. Subsequently, they developed a statement of objections as required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and that statement is in the packet this evening. We are asking you to receive the statement and discuss what you would like to do for next steps to address the statement from council. And given the lateness of the hour, I would suggest that we perhaps do not hold substantial discussion on this item tonight, which perhaps warrants it. Um, this is ultimately your decision, but I would recommend considering a, a meeting date that would be dedicated only to this item.
Mr. Chair, if I can just briefly explain the process now that happens under the Planning Enabling Act. Because the city council has rejected the proposed master plan, this now comes back to the planning commission, Planning Enabling Act requires the planning commission to consider those objections and revise the proposed master plan to address those objections in a manner that the planning commission sees fit. At that point, then the original process kind of starts over again, you would set a public hearing, there will be a public hearing. Uh, you would presumably vote to send a revised master plan to city council, and that would go to city council. There were some public comments tonight that the planning commission should vote to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. Just wanted to clarify for the planning commission, that's not a resolution that's before you, that was the resolution that the city council had adopted, so there is no pending resolution before you tonight. There can't be a pending resolution before you tonight, you first will have to discuss the objections, decide what revisions you want to make, at that point, you can set up for a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I support that approach of having a separate discussion at a meeting just to cover this, to button it up, because we need to look at the master plan draft, to see where these statements are going to be inserted, to make sure that they are where we want them to be, and to discover anything else that we may need to take care of in order to, uh, you know, dot all the i's and cross the t's.
I totally agree, at ten thirty, I'm not sure we're all functioning at a really high level, so.
And I concur, I mean, each one of these, there's probably three separate areas that we really need to look at individually, each one, give each one the, the time that it deserves to see where this, uh, planning commission comes out in that guidance.
So, Kelly, shall we set a meeting date for that purpose, and that purpose only?
I would suggest that I, um, look at the calendar and propose some meeting dates via email rather than trying to do it here. Um, given the holiday schedule and, um, some other commitments that you all are bumping up against, um, I'm expecting this meeting to take place sometime in January. Um, particularly if we want Marcy, um, or Becca from the planning commission to be present, which I think we do. Um, I know that it wa, it's looking like January, February before they'll be able to come for a meeting.
All right, then you'll circu, you'll circulate some potential dates?
I will.
By email, and we'll reply, and try to get agreement on something?
Yes.
Everyone okay with that, opinions, other ideas? All right, then.
I, I just think it's very frustrating for the residents, um, for this to have just taken so long. It took quite a while from the time we made the recommendation until it got to planning, um, city council, so.
Well, there's a reason it took so long. Lot of comments, lot of changes.
Well.
All right, then, I think we can move on, commission.
Actually, the time I was talking about is from the time planning commission recommended approval until it got to city council.
I don't know.
And council could have approved it, and then we wouldn't be here, so, that was actually our, our recommendation.
It's a long process, there it goes, government, slow. Just don't shut down.
Kelly, do you have any closing remarks?
Uh, my remarks would be the next meeting, as we've talked about, December four, um, expect a very full agenda, um, and then expect full agenda probably in January as well, we'll be very busy.
All right. Closing comments, Mike, would you lead us off?
Yes, um, I hope I started to end, no comment.
Eric, anything to add?
Very short, thank you for everyone for coming and sticking it out.
Yes, I would like to reiterate what, um, uh, was said at the beginning of the meeting, that we do take all of your inputs seriously, we read all your letters, and we consider whatever you say, and I appreciate those that who spoke today, because they did so clearly. And I appreciate those that who spoke today, because they did so clearly and respectfully. And I think your message is heard when that is how it's delivered, so thank you for that.
Heavy load tonight. Thank you all for following along and keeping up. I hope we didn't kick too many things down the road. But it seemed to be necessary, so. I think, once again, we need to, we need to pay attention to what our job is and not be getting into other people's work, or getting ahead of ourselves. Zoning is not site plan review. There's separate steps, and we can be more efficient in our work if we remember that. Other than that, thank you all.
Clark, something?
Yes, uh, congratulations to Eddie Polk.
Thank you.
Who is a council member-elect. You still have to take the oath of office. Uh, I also want to say thank you to Larry for pitch hitting tonight. He did a nice job. It all came back to you. Also want to, I appreciate both Mary and Bob tonight for abstaining. That is hard to sit up here and be silent. I think I saw people biting their tongues, but that's what happens, because it just does. It's what, it's what we do. That's why we're here. And then, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Eddie? Yes, and I, I echo the same sentiments from Janet, and, you know, and also, it's good to see the public out here. And I can, I can feel your passion and those things that are very important to you. I understand that, and I can appreciate that, and encourage you to continue to do so. Thank you.
Paul?
I, I think it's essential that we not lose what Commissioner Stegman said earlier on the process on STRs. We, we have got to take action so that when we have submittals that are in compliance with the requirements, our review takes a lot of time and very little value. And, and I understand just kicking items to the city council probably is not the right thing to do, but the process needs to be changed, um, because we are spending way too much time doing things that provide very little value. That's all I got.
I think we're all in agreement there. Tim?
One twenty baseline, that one's actually quite a complicated, uh, issue. So hopefully, we can work through that at pretty good pace. Janice and Mary, good job on coordinating for Ram Spirit of Spirit Week. Congratulations to Eddie for his election. That's it.
Um, I'll just second much of what was said, especially congratulations to Eddie. Thanks to Larry for, uh, being the guy tonight. Appreciate all the input from citizens. We're all frustrated. I share Mary's frustration that some of this has taken longer than we all would have liked. We just have to have confidence that we can see the process through. And maybe most importantly, thanks to Kelly and Samantha for all you do to make these meetings happen. And I think we're at a point we can move to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Yes.